Good evening, West Orange. Welcome to the July 11th, 2017 council meeting. This is the 15th meeting of the year. And you may notice that I'm not wearing a tie. That's because I thought the rules were in July and August, we are relaxed. And so we can dress down because we only have one meeting and it's very hot. I think the joke's on me.
No, no, that's true.
You're correct.
That's protocol.
So the All-Star game is tonight. The All-Star game is tonight, so...
Yeah.
Yes. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28th, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8th, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Guarino.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Kukovjak.
Present.
First item on the conference agenda, I'm going to defer to Councilman Cirillo. He has a guest here.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I would like to ask Father Miguel Hernandez to come up to the podium. And thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to present today. Council President, and members of the council, and the public at home, members of the press, and visitors, guests. As you know, last year, there was an issue with the quality of water in the state of Michigan, and also in some other parts of the country, as well as the state of New Jersey, whereby some of the water quality was being affected by the infrastructure. The way it works is outside of your home, outside of your place of residency, the responsibility of the infrastructure and the responsibility of the quality of water, Council President, lies with the water provider. In our case, in West Orange, it would be New Jersey American Water. Once the lines cross into your property, that becomes a responsibility of the homeowner, the resident, or the commercial establishment, whatever it may be. In West Orange, Council President, we have New Jersey American Water, which is the lead water company, as you know, and one of the lead water companies in the country, actually. New Jersey American Water was founded in 1886, and is the largest water company in the entire nation. They follow standards set by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency and the state of New Jersey, DEP. Council President, Father Miguel Hernandez is the lead pastor at Holy Trinity Episcopal Church at 315 Main Street. He is doing a doctorate in ministry, and as part of his thesis and as part of his studies, he is required to do an assessment of some sort of public utility. In this case, Father Miguel has chosen to assess the quality of the water in the township. As I mentioned, New Jersey American Water also, not only is the provider, but it has been very responsible. They have a website, newjerseyamwater.com, where you can find data, annual reports on the quality of the water that's coming into your homes. So taking that data, Father Miguel Hernandez, and I don't want to take a lot of his product here, or talk too much about it, he's taken that data and performed an assessment, and he asked to present some of his work and some of his findings to the council and the members at home. So with that said, Father Miguel Hernandez, the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greetings, Council President Joe Kukovjak, council members and officers, public and general. I'm the Reverend Miguel Hernandez, priest in charge of Holy Trinity located at 315 Main Street in West Orange. Currently, I'm working on a project named God and Science, in which an awareness campaign is being launched to inform our local community about the water quality in West Orange. In order to raise this awareness, some sermons have been delivered at the church. There have been presentations, PowerPoint presentations, on understanding the water quality report provided by the New Jersey American Water. The idea has been to inform people as to what are the contaminants in the water. We have not done extensive testing ourselves, except that we hired a private company, and they told us that the results were fine for Holy Trinity. Rutgers University Environmental Labs came to the church, took some samples, and they are going to be testing the water, and they will be providing the results this week in Piscataway. They are after, Rutgers University is after lead, because the issue of lead is a very important issue in many communities, like in Flint, and somewhere there, like Newark, and other places in New Jersey, lead levels have been higher than what the EPA, you know, calls for action number is, which is 15 par per billion. And when we talk to people about water, our first perception is that they do not know what's in the water. You know, they don't know how to receive or read the report, they don't know how to access the webpage. I downloaded the report for 2015, and it was easy to get access to. The 2016, there was a glitch. Somehow, they changed the format, and so I contacted directly New Jersey American Water, and they're trying to make it work. Now, in terms of the numbers, like I said, we're not really testing everything in the water. It would be very expensive. Just the simple sample that was taken and done by a private company cost us $400. So every owner, or someone who is interested in knowing what's in the water, they have to test it themselves. And then someone has to explain to them what it means, you know, what are those numbers represents, if they are, you know, dangerous to the health of the people. And so, in this awareness campaign, I tried to simplify the numbers, and I showed them, for example, that there is this standard that everybody's following. However, there are scientists that are saying that 15 par per billion is basically is too much. Children who are six years of younger, and pregnant women, if they are exposed to lead levels that are very high, there can be detrimental issues to their mental capacity development. And in case of women, the lead confuses the body, and it presents itself as calcium. So when the fetus is forming, instead of getting calcium for the bones, it will be getting lead. So that's the danger. And that's why the awareness campaign is all about. Now, in my understanding of the situation, this problem has to do with the pipes that comes into the house, or the infrastructure in the town, or the area where people live, especially if the buildings are there before 1920. If the infrastructure had been there before 1920, most likely, the pipes are lead. And then the question comes to mind as to, you know, what is the proper way to keep those pipes at least to the point that they are controlled, be treated? And that's the part that we need to be concerned, because we get the reports from, let's say, for example, New Jersey American Water, once a year. And the question is, the infrastructure is always moving water. What's going on on an everyday basis? We don't know. So that means that auditing has to be taken place independently of the New Jersey American Water. Somebody has to be testing the water and making a comparison on the numbers. That can be very expensive. And so, people at home, they need to be aware of that. One of the things that we recommend, after I give the presentations about the numbers, is like some precautions. I often tell people to let the water run for about two minutes, in the morning especially, because lead accumulation, you know, stays in the pipes overnight. So if you let the water run for about two minutes, most likely, that lead contamination and concentration is gone by the time you use the water for drinking and cooking. We also recommend that people test the water at their home, if the house or building is, like I said, built before 1920, because at least they will have an indication as to what's in the house. But also, we all give them more tools, like for example, use filtered water. You know, there are filters that are not that expensive, and people can put them in their home, or at least just to use it for cooking and drinking. But water, you know, is an issue that we all feel so comfortable about it, because it's easy. We just buy it and drink it, but even then, we don't know what's in that water, because we don't know who's testing the water. So we're still in a catch-22 situation there. The idea of this project, as Victor Cirillo, council member, said, has to do with a doctoral degree that I'm pursuing at the New York Theological Seminar. And the idea there is to take on an issue that affects a community and how we can improve it. In this case, like I said, we're trying to bring awareness into the issue of the water quality. We do not have the resources to test the water, but we have at least the tools to teach people. I myself, I'm an engineer, you know, before I became a priest, I used to be an electrical engineer with AT&amp;T, losing technologies, Alcatel losing, now Nokia. So I know something about engineering, something about numbers, and I'm able to at least digest the data. And I realize that sometimes I have to go and talk to the expert, because I don't really know, you know, what those numbers mean. And little by little, I'm understanding that, yes, they're doing diligent work in providing the data, but we need to expose people to their understanding and create that awareness, and that's the reason why I'm here. And I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Father. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Question?
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Father, for coming this evening. So I guess this is the start of an awareness campaign that you will be having, I guess, within the community?
I've been having it at Holy Trinity, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it has been going on. I have been posting some of the presentations on YouTube, so that are available, people can see the presentations. And also, one thing that I have found is that the Latino community is the one that really don't even know what's going on, and so I decided to do some presentations in a bilingual format, and one of them in Spanish.
Very nice. Thank you for that. I think it's important. Councilwoman.
Well, really, just to thank you, that raising the awareness, the campaign, it's very informative. We also, you know, we get the information from New Jersey American Water, and we believe what it says. We always thought that our water quality was good, to high quality. And now, it's interesting what you're raising these points about now even analyzing those numbers, and what you're finding. And I know through some of the work that you've been doing, you have students involved, or I should say parishioners from the church involved in some of the work.
Yeah, this project started three years, three summers ago, we started something called God and Science Summit Program for children. And basically, we teach them for about four, five weeks, mathematics, science, electronic kids. And in the past summer, we included also ARPS. And so out of that project came this, also, this other project, and the children are involved. A group of us are going to be going down to Rutgers in Piscataway this Thursday, to witness, you know, the results. And also, the children will be exposed to the testing environment that they have, they will be given a tour, with the idea that children become interested in the science, and also in the environment, you know, to take care of the environment.
But it's not just the students. I think everyone in the community also would appreciate reading these recommendations that we can, what we can do locally if you don't have the resources and funding to, you know, do those water quality tests. So, good luck on that dissertation on the PhD.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Father Miguel, thank you again for being here, Father Miguel. Just a quick question, too, is also educating the residents that, you know, especially with the re-lining of our water mains in the township over the past couple of years, that's really benefited us, too, to clean out the system. But also, the homeowners need to be reminded, and if their tenants know that, a lot of the problems happen within the structure of the house, because a lot of that is lead pipe, it's old pipe, and it needs to be maintained. So it's good, and we'd love to see those numbers when they come out, Father Miguel. Thank you.
Okay. In our case, the testing that they did at the church was basically for lead.
Right.
So we let you know about the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Father, just one more question. In case the residents, in case residents are watching the video and want to follow up with more information, I know Councilman Cirillo mentioned the website address for, and you discussed it, too, for the actual reports. Is there, and you also mentioned that there are some of your presentations up on YouTube.
Right. The, people can go to the West Orange webpage, and the water report is right there. I've been working also with the City Hall about that, and they have the link directly to the American Water. So they can go into our town webpage, and from there, they can go to the water quality report.
Okay. And is there a phone number that, if people don't have access to the internet, is there a phone number that might maybe?
I don't have it with me right now, but there is a phone number, of course, yes.
Maybe next?
They can also contact the Health Department here at West Orange, and they should be getting the information from there as well.
Okay. Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is an update from Business Administrator Jack Sayers on downtown redevelopment.
Downtown redevelopment. Actually, I was trying to get in contact with my contact there to try and set up the meeting that Mr. Cirillo wanted to have by going into the building. Unfortunately, I think he's on vacation, because he hasn't called me back in a couple of days. So I'm waiting to hear back from him. Other than that, I was down there again today, and as you can see, the new windows are in. It's really starting to look good. They are, what I was trying to find out was whether they had actually leased any of the properties yet, because there's a big sign up there with...
Yeah, the rail letter.
But I haven't gotten that information. But other than that, it's rocking and rolling, I can tell you that.
Because we can't see from the street, is the part, like, where are they at with the parking deck?
The garage is almost completed.
Okay.
It's almost finished. There's just, actually, it is finished, but there's just some tidying up that they're doing with the garage. And they're completing the R over R on the outside.
Yeah.
And like I said, you see the new windows that they put in the...
Yeah, they're beautiful.
Yeah, it looks nice, and they're moving along. They're definitely moving along. And as soon as I hear back from my friend, I will let you guys know when we go in.
Oh, you know what I want.
Well, I had talked to him about, he was back when I talked to him about you, but then Victor had made that comment last week. I called again, but he must be on vacation, because he, usually, he calls me back. I even call him on his cell phone, so he must be out of the country, I would think.
No, to understand, Council President, I just may as soon as... Do they have any marketing packages yet, Mr. Sayers?
I have not, I, I mean, again, I haven't talked to him since the last meeting, so as of the last meeting, they did not, but I can find out when he comes back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is council liaison announcements. Anybody like to go?
Sure.
Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I know everybody's going to talk about this tonight, but I hope all our residents and members of the West Orange community, outline communities got a chance to go see the Vietnam Veterans War Memorial. Just the spirit of being there, to see the residents and the people that came out, especially all the volunteers, I'd like to thank the mayor's office, Sherry Quirk, and all the volunteers from throughout the community, who really spent a lot of time giving their time and effort to give thanks to our veterans, those living, and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And also, too, if you look on YouTube and Facebook, Joe Fagan, our town historian, spent three full days and nights at the Vietnam memorial, interviewing people, being there, and getting facts. And you'd be surprised how many Vietnam veterans have lived in the township of West Orange. And the interviews you can see on, you see the real heartfelt appreciation that the families of deceased members of Vietnam and the current veterans, what they felt, and the great thing that the township did. So I know the rest of my colleagues will talk about it, but it was just a great, great effort on the township, and we have to thank everybody involved, and thank the vendors who supplied the food and support services. It was really, really great. I know a list will be going out of those merchants who gave, and we should, you know, of course, you know, go to them and buy products from them to give us a thanks. From the Downtown Alliance, of course, the street fair was great. Also, we're slaying down two new openings that will be happening, actually, one is already happening, is Sam's Place. It's a barbecue, it's a BYOB restaurant with wraps, dinner, and gray fried chicken, and it's open on Main Street, right across the street. You know, it's at, sorry, it's at 320 Main Street, so if anybody's going there, you should. It's a new merchant in town, and he's a resident, and he really wants to make a go of it and like help the downtown. The second opening is Sweet Garden Bakery. It's the St. Cloud family who is opening it, and it'll be having a soft opening on this Saturday, the 15th, at 1:00 p.m., and they are directly across from the Trinity Church. So I hope everybody will make an effort to come down to Main Street and patronize this family. They are St. Cloud family, and we'd like to see them to be successful. Also, just to give you an update, if you've been driving down Main Street, other than Edison Lofts going up, the other thing going up and almost completed is the Community House Rec Center, which is a totally re-gutted and retrofitted basketball court and facility that'll be open to the residents of West Orange. It's a great call-out to the community house that fully funded it, and of course, with the township self, with the CBDG grants, to move it forward. And it should be opening very shortly, but it's been a nice presentation, a new development, new fit into Main Street, and a real good call-out to Paul Sido and his board at the Community House. Other than that, that's about all. And also, is this week, if it's shown to, is Thursday night, 7:30, at the Essex County Developmental Center at Turtle Bag Zoo, is our monthly scheduled West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. So we hope residents will come out to the meeting and voice your opinions and concerns, and we will have a member of the Essex County Prosecutor's Office there to talk about statistics. So I hope everybody can make it. It's this Thursday, July 13th, and it's at 7:30 at Turtle Bag Zoo. And thank you, Council President.
Sure. Councilman?
Yeah, real quick, Council President, I just wanted to thank the Recreation Department, Bill Keough. I had such a great time at the fireworks night. It was just beautiful. It was, I saw you, yes. I don't know, my colleague, the rest of my colleagues were there, but Bill Keough did a tremendous job, and it fell on a Tuesday, which means that we have a bigger crowd. I mean, there were people lined up on Pleasant Valley Way, Eagle Rock Avenue, all over the place, like watching the fireworks. This is 4th of July, very special, the police officers, the emergency personnel. Just want to thank everybody for a really, really good job showcasing the community, in addition to the Vietnam War. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful summertime, and also check out the New Jersey Arts Incubator website. There are events going on all summer at OSPAC, the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. It's a really beautiful facility. Check it out. I'm sure that maybe Councilwoman has, Councilwoman McCartney has some of the showing, there's something coming up, the, there's a fair.
Oh, the, I haven't.
You haven't? Okay, yeah. So anyhow, the website is NJAI.org. That's all for today, Council President. Thank you very much.
Councilman?
Sure. So to follow up on Councilman Cirillo's lead-in, on July 22nd, Saturday, at OSPAC will be the International Food Festival. I don't have the start time, it's late in the afternoon, we'll go into the early evening. There'll be riding games and plenty of food to be enjoyed by all. So if you get a chance or home on July 22nd, stop on by. Staying in the theme of food, on July 2nd, I want to just congratulate the Recreation Department for putting on the first-ever food truck festival. It was a very ambitious endeavor, it was very successful, it was a very hot day. The emergency management came out, and they had fans, or fire department was on hand, keeping folks cool. But a big shout-out to Candy Myrick of the rec, and Edwin Johnson, they did a great job. The trucks ran out of food on occasion, because so many folks were just buying out, they had to get deliveries during the day, some kiddie rides, and really, a good time was had by all. And what I liked about it, it was on a Sunday, we had many representatives of the community there, and it just really was a nice compliment. They were, they had golf carts on hand to drive folks up to the football field to visit the Vietnam National Memorial Wall, and that was, you know, that was just an added plus for those who attended. And again, just to ditto my colleagues' comments, you know, what an honor to be present and part of those ceremonies, the opening and the closing ceremonies, they were very emotional, being able to talk to some of our veterans who had lost friends, helping folks find names of loved ones on the wall, on the wall was very emotional. And, you know, we forget of all those who served in that war, when they came home, they weren't really honored. So it was a very nice moment for them to be honored here in West Orange. We had about eight to nine thousand visitors, I believe, was the number. And, you know, there's so many people to thank. I know the administration, the police and fire, and public works, and our veteran organizations at town, and their families did a tremendous job in getting the word out and getting folks here. But I also want to give kudos to Dawn Arribato, one of the ROTC, junior ROTC moms from high school. Her daughter is actually one of our first cadets, our high school, female high school cadets to be accepted, and she is right now, currently, in the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. And Dawn is part of a booster club for the, for her daughter, and heard about the wall, and made the connection here. And the mayor and the administration did a fabulous job on getting it here to West Orange. So, you know, thank you to everybody. It was just a great, great weekend. I'm usually, you know, down the shore, it was great to be, to be home up in town for the Fourth. There was just so many activities and the buzz between the fireworks and the races and all the festivities. It was just a great place to be, and proud to be a resident here in West Orange. Just wanted to give my colleagues an update. I had a meeting this morning with the, with my committee, with the Health Department, on our Aging in Place Needs Assessment Resident Survey Study. For those of you who haven't heard about it yet, you will be. We're going to have, once we finalize the details, which we're getting very close to, the Health Department is working with Montclair State University, and with their Center for Research and Evaluation on Education Human Services Department. And we received a grant from Partners in Health, which we are utilizing to complete this study here in the township. We have, this morning, we were finalizing dates, we're looking now at mid-August, we had hoped to get it started in mid-July, but with all the data that we've collected, and working hand-in-hand with Montclair State, the survey is kind of lengthy right now, so... And great questions. It's going to be a very comprehensive study that we're going to be putting out there to the public. It's for residents that are 55 and older, it's for all our residents, and we're going to try to get a sampling from, you know, folks that are homeowners in town, in our senior buildings and apartments, of course, you know, there's all sorts of demographic questions, and we're really going to get a good handle on our services, our current services, what we offer, what could be improved, what we need here in the township, and it's about a six-month process. So starting next week, we have a few finalized data I have for the council. So starting next week, we have a few finalized data I have for the council. I had updated Mr. Sayers earlier today. But next week, on the 19th, the Montclair State's going to come in, and not, the committee's not going to be present, other than one of the representatives just to introduce the residents. We're going to take about five or six residents to take the draft copy, PDF version of this study, of the questionnaire that we have in place so far. We, you know, we've got to get a handle on it to see if it's feasible. Montclair State believes it should take about 30 minutes, which sounds like a long time, so we want to give it a test run. And they're going to work with the residents to get feedback, so just be the Montclair State folks and our residents with feedback, so the residents could talk openly. And the Health Department will call, will reach out to the folks. We had a few people that were interested that have come to the meetings. So they're going to pick about five to six people for the first step. Once they get that together, they're, they'll, will keep tweaking the questionnaire. And again, they feel confident they'll be able to put it out online for mid-August. July 27th, we're going to have a training. Montclair State, part of the contract is they come in and they train not only our staff, but volunteers in the community who like to help and assist with the study on data collection and data entry. And they'll teach our, our employees to turnkey it to, to train others. So this way, on the 27th, we had to check with different vacation schedules, because it is summer and we're dealing with summer. So we have enough employees that will be able to get trained, and whatever volunteers can make it to that session, the staff will be trained to turnkey it to whatever volunteers, because of course, the more, the merrier, we're going to try to get trained up and running. So it's very exciting. We're trying to take our time to get this done right. And we look forward to great results sometime, the beginning of 2019, wait, this is 1718. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I am going to echo a lot of the kudos that my colleague said about the entire 4th of July weekend. It was beautiful. Each event in itself, good standalone, they were all beautiful, wonderful events between the mayor's office, particularly the Vietnam Memorial Traveling Wall. Just, just so well done. Thank you for the mayor's office. Sir team, Joe Fagan, videos, if you haven't seen the videos yet, there's a link on the website, westorange.org. The Sir team, police, fire, and always the Department of Public Works, because they just make it happen for all the ceremonies to, to occur. So I agree. There were a couple of segues here, talking about the seniors, the New Jersey Foundation on Aging, I had met, Aging, I had mentioned this a few months ago, that we made contact, I made contact with representatives there. So we are now on their distribution list to have videos on our TV-36 for Comcast customers, TV-45 for FiOS customers, videos from New Jersey Foundation on Aging, a wide variety of topics, importance of sleep, I just read about, blood pressure, all different kinds of things. So, and they're aired many times during the day, during the week, for us to view. So just short educational videos. Jerry mentioned the pedestrian safety meeting on July 13th. This Thursday is a very busy day. The Chamber of Commerce has a Biz 2.0 at the library, that is every Thursday at 7:00 in the library. Pedestrian safety meeting was mentioned. And we have the annual Glenmont Garage event at Llewellyn Park. All of the proceeds that are raised at the Glenmont Garage support the conservation efforts at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. This is a beautiful event. Last year's proceeds helped support the first electric charging station in Edison's, on Edison's Estate. This year, we're preserving the Loopster, which is also in the garage, oil dispensers that are there. So everyone is welcome, 5 to 7:30, cocktail hour. There are just, you also mentioned, Jerry mentioned Sam's Place as a new restaurant in Main Street, and they jumped in with both feet to donate food for the event. We have Benji's, Mexican Grill, the Oak Barrel, the Wilshire Grand Catering contributing to this cocktail party Thursday at 5:00 at the Glenmont Estate. And a special thanks to Anthony D'Agostino, the owner of The Poorhouse, for providing our signature cocktail, which we call the Electric Spark. Tickets are available at friendsofedison.org for that event. And the planning board meeting for July was canceled, but I would like to respond to a letter. The council received an anonymous letter from a residence saying that rumors are circulating that there is an 80-unit apartment building on Ashland Avenue that has been approved. There is no such application, this has not been approved. I can't respond directly because the letter's anonymous, but just if that person is listening, this is surely a rumor, and, and it has, has not come before the zoning or planning Sorry? One more. The Arts Council, West Orange Arts Council, at our last meeting, I had mentioned the coloring book event that they're having. This is for Masquerade Party on October 20th. What the Arts Council, they are asking residents to submit photos of something in West Orange. They will transform the photo into a black and white illustration and create a coloring book. It's called Color My World, and present. They will be available at the Masquerade Party at the Gallery and Gift Shop at 551 Valley Road on October 20th at 7:30. For more information about the Arts Council, you can go to W O Arts.org. Plenty of things going on at the Gallery and Gift Shop, 551 Valley Road. Check it out. Thank you.
Councilwoman, could I just follow up on just the, this letter from somebody who was concerned about a big development on Ashland Avenue? And I, I'm assuming that this is the, the developers who had, who had expressed some interest to the administration, and there was a meeting, I guess, that I missed. I was supposed to be there, I missed it. You were there, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the meeting?
That's what was presented. It was a presentation, the planning director was there, our engineer was there. It's just too dense for the area, that was pretty much what the discussion was. So that's why I'm saying, this is, yes, rumors were circulating because there was such a presentation, but has not moved forward.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our conference agenda. Madam Clerk?
Let me just pass this out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Did you want to, did you have anything else you wanted to?
I just had one more, one more.
Please do, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I promised I would announce in the, I knew that it was here. Because it is summer and it is baseball, the Knights of Columbus, the West Orange Knights of Columbus will be having Family Fun Night at New Jersey Jackal Stadium on next week, Thursday, July 20th, $17 per person. And you can reach out to Rich Sharomonte at 973-325-3545, or reach out to Knights of Columbus on their website. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our conference agenda. Madam Clerk, I apologize for interrupting you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino, present. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kukoviac?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I may have to leave to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Welcome, everybody. When we started the conference agenda shortly after 6:30, there weren't a whole lot of you here, and now there are. So welcome, and thank you for taking time to, to come to our meeting. The first item on the agenda of the public meeting is public comment. Those of you who want to speak during public comment, you have five minutes. Please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. And then I, to try to speed things up, I encourage people to come down to the front so that there's less of a lag time between speakers. When you come to the lectern, please speak into the microphones. There's a couple of microphones there. And because of the air conditioning, it's, it's a little bit difficult to hear. Please start out with your name, spelling of both your first and last name, and your address for our minutes. You'll have five minutes. We typically don't respond to individual comments until the end. So everybody who wants to speak at public comment speaks, and then the council and the administration will respond if so desire. So anyone who wish to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. See a young gentleman here? Please come on up to the lectern. I see, is that Mr. Pringle's hand? Please come up. Mr. Pringle, you'll be the second speaker?
This is about anything.
And then the young woman in the front, you can be the third speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, you, that wasn't Mr. Pringle, so please, yes, please come down, you're the second speaker. I'm sorry, I couldn't see you.
Anyone?
Oh, they're both here.
Yeah. My name is Nat Stirberg. I live at 45 Glen Avenue in the park. I know you've been down this road before, but I've had some health problems, and I just got back concerning the road, if I might, and the sewer charges. Now, if you think I'm late about that, I'll put it away. Am I okay with it?
You're fine.
Thank you.
This is your council. You say what, you can talk about whatever you want.
Well, they didn't name the ballfield after me. I was going over some stuff, I've done some building, and I know it's late, and this is the final meeting of this, but I just don't understand, we are a private, we're gated community, I guess that's the best way to say it. And I was looking over the numbers, numbers I know. And I couldn't understand why, as a gated community, we were paying so much as compared to the township. Now, I know you people do other gated communities' roads and what have you, and for instance, I can only warn, I spoke to someone about, I think Eagle Ridge, you guys did the roads in, which is also a gated community. I know Llewellyn Park is much bigger, but still, there must be a percentage of dollars which you put in and the, the place puts in, Llewellyn Park or what have you. I'd like to know how you get to that number. I know what you put in for Llewellyn Park, and it was very small. Why, I don't know. You pay an awful lot of taxes, two different ways. Personally, I don't think the US government pays enough taxes on what they own. I finally figured out that I didn't know it was roadfront or percentage of your taxes, general taxes. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, I finally got to it was a percentage of your taxes that you paid in the town. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I got that out of the way. So the only thing left that I had to discuss was the percentage that we must pay in comparison to the price of the whole job. So if somebody can elucidate, talk to me, tell me how you get, you come up with that number, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Just, just to clarify, Mr. Virg, you're asking about road construction in the township? Is that what you're asking about?
Basically, yes.
Okay. So if the answer is that not everybody's roads get done at the same time, we have a, sort of a triage system where we identify the roads most in need of work, and then prioritize them in terms of how much funding we have available? Is that what you're looking for?
No, I'm looking for that, but once you pull out that package that you have to do, and you have money for it, you prioritize it, how, if it's in a gated community, and that community pays partial share, because it is gated, private, as they say, how do you determine what share they pay and what share you pay?
Okay. And you're talking about road construction? You're not talking about?
I'm talking about sewers, because they were part of it, and the road construction in Llewellyn Park.
Okay.
He's talking about the residential.
Okay. So thank you, if that, the question will?
Oh, you're going to answer later.
We're going to answer later, yes.
We'll all forget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, who hasn't been recognized yet? Please raise your hand. Yes, gentlemen in the back on the left, please, my left, please come on down. And then, Mr. Meyer, what's next? Please, go ahead.
Good evening. Everybody hears me? I'm good, microphone. So my name is Robert Daniel, R-O-B-E-R-T, last name Daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L. I live at 2B Buckingham Road here in West Orange. So I'm here to discuss the intersection of two streets, Mount Pleasant Avenue and Prospect Avenue. I'm here to discuss the redevelopment of the northeastern quadrant of that intersection after the project's approval at the Planning Board on June 7th. The property is the long abandoned Japanese restaurant. The project is currently known to some of you as the Goddard School and Early Childhood Center. It's formerly known as Application, so you can all take notes, PB-17-04 by GBSJ Properties. I'm deeply concerned as a citizen of our town. I find it quite frustrating that the redevelopment of this property is proceeding adjacent to this geometrically challenged intersection, geometrically deficient intersection without any provision of sidewalks along Mount Prospect, along Prospect Avenue, or, excuse me, along Mount Pleasant Avenue, and additional lane capacity along the western approach of Mount Pleasant Avenue into the intersection, making two full lanes at the stop line. So I am appealing to the Town Council, because the Planning Board has not considered the broader public interests. Once this project proceeds, if it's as currently approved, how many minutes, 3.3 is left, township residents will wonder why this project is being built and the adjacent intersection is totally being neglected. That's the current project. Our town, state, and county policy of complete streets for pedestrians should be complete, and that includes throughout our town and includes this project. So therefore, we want the installation of a sidewalk and a bus stop along Mount Pleasant Avenue, adjacent to the project, and a full width right turn lane to be part of this parcel's development, again, along Mount Pleasant Avenue. And I thank you for your time and consideration, and two minutes and 45 seconds are left. So I think the next person can proceed. So thank you, and you can give answers later on.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Good evening. My name is Karen Skiers of 62 Undercliffe Terrace South. Let me spell that, K-A-R-E-N, Skiers, S-K-Y-E-R-S, 62 Undercliffe Terrace South. So I'm, I'm here this evening, and I just want to give you a little bit of background. My husband and I met about 15-plus years ago, fell in love here in West Orange. We rented, I believe it was the Crest Ridge Apartments along Mount Pleasant Avenue. Later bought a lovely home on Gilbert Place, and just this, we sold that, and just this past May, we moved into our current residence, which is 62 Undercliffe Terrace South. Unbeknownst to us, during the timeframe that we bought the house, that the bamboo in our neighbors, there, had, there in front of us, that the bamboo in their yard would go through a significant growth spurt. But not only has there been growth spurt with this bamboo, which is really essentially wild weed, grass, wild weed, grass, whatever you want to call it, it's very aggressive and has been growing on our property. So this bamboo, I'm telling you, it's out of control. It's probably, we have 40, 50 feet worth of bamboo in front of us. I want to just submit to you, and the neighbor that this bamboo belongs to is Shamari Owens of 59 Burnett Terrace. So I just want to show you what we see from our back deck. Okay? New York City should be a hot add also. Keep that in mind. Let me just, so we've tried to compromise and work with Mr. Shamari Owens with no success. He has stated that we have to pay to cut his bamboo that's growing on our property. We've already invested thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars with our landscaper to cut what has grown on our property, although he chooses not to maintain his bamboo, doesn't want to trim it, and wants us to be responsible for everything. So my question to the council is, one, do we have an ordinance on anything related to bamboo in West Orange? And two, if we do not have an ordinance related to bamboo in West Orange, I would like to ask that the council allow me to partner with an environmental commission or council of some sort to draft one up and propose it for approval. I do have here with me today, because bamboo is a serious issue, our neighboring town of Livingston, they just recently passed an ordinance on bamboo. And it's very detailed in how, you know, property owners should maintain it, and also preventing people from planting it because it impedes on other people's property. So I would just like to, you know, thank you all here today for listening to me, and just also ask for your consideration for an ordinance like this. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're next.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mark Romanoff, M-A-R-C-R-O-M-A-N-O-F-F. I live at 9 Elm Court Way in Llewellyn Park. I've been resident for a couple of years now. First, before I, I have a quick question, but I just wanted to thank the council. I've served on committees and boards before, and I appreciate there is a tremendous amount of work and dedication that goes in behind the scenes, and your effort is appreciated. The question I have, when I reviewed the mailing from the town regarding the sewer project and road project, relates to, you know, the potential for a tax appeal. And it seems to me that the numbers there that are listed reflect sort of a snapshot in time as to when, whenever the tax assessment was made. And I'm just trying to understand, so maybe someone could help me understand, what were to happen if there were an appeal, whether that appeal would extend across, you know, this, you know, both the regular taxes and also the special assessment. So if someone could help me understand that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Romanoff. Mr. Meyerwitz, I think you're next. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Ms. Silvestri, you can be next. Yes. Ms. Romanoff, is it 9 Court Way?
9 Elm Court.
Elm Court, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Meyerwitz, 19 Howell Drive. I would just like to echo the sentiments of Councilman Guarino and say that the Vietnam Memorial Wall truly was a moving experience. And to have, I went and visited mid-morning, Saturday morning, I guess it was after the opening ceremony. It was kind of a very quiet time, there weren't many people there. And it was truly an interesting experience, an amazing experience, to walk 100 yards along the football field with names of mostly young men who sacrificed their lives in the name of maintaining our freedom. So I hope everyone in town got a chance to see that memorial, and if you say the numbers were so strong, it was a good thing, you know, it was a great thing that the township did by bringing this memorial to the high school football field. Mrs. Morelli, I don't know if she's here...
Mr. Meyerwitz, can I just interrupt you for a second, please? Ladies and gentlemen, as I've mentioned before, it's difficult to hear because of the air conditioning. If you do need to discuss issues, we can hear you up here. Could you just go outside to continue the conversation, please, so we can hear the speakers? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Meyerwitz, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mrs. Morelli, I don't think she's here tonight, for keeping me informed about all the issues and initiatives that are going on in town regarding senior citizens. I don't know why she would think I would want to know this, but I guess I'm getting up there. She's been doing an amazing job in senior citizen safety and making sure that the senior citizens can avoid financial scams, that they can walk the streets, you know, cross the streets well, all different kinds of issues. And I understand that she's a big mover and pusher behind some of the things that the council is adopting, so I want to, so I'm very happy that the council is listening to some of her suggestions, and that the administration also should listen to her suggestions. She did ask me to announce that at the pool on, at the town pool on Sunday, I believe it's at 2 o'clock, there is a swing band, or, I thought it would be easy to remember, now I don't remember, a three-person singing group. She said it's like the Andrews Sisters, so if you know the Andrews Sisters, who will be doing 40-type music at the pool this Sunday afternoon at 2 o'clock, is that right? So, swing is not just for, you know, older people. Swing is really sophisticated, high-level music, you know, American music. And it would be nice for everyone who is a member of the pool to go hear them Sunday afternoon, and you could bring guests. Guests, I think it's about, what, $10 a person or something, so it's not a big... And the pool is really nice this year, too. The water, you know, place is very busy, the water's nice and clean and clear and very cool. It's been a good place. I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Meyerwitz. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. Mr. Puglisi?
Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I apologize, my printer wasn't working tonight, so I'm trying to read off my phone, so this is also greener, but please bear with me if I misspeak at some times. Tonight, I want to speak about Resolution 16517, which is authorizing an award of contract to American Ramp Company to provide skate park equipment and concrete pad in the amount of about $169,000. This seems like a blast from the past. In some ways, it seems like only yesterday, but it was actually in 2010 when the council first approved appropriations and bondings for a skate park to be located next to the Degnan Park Playground. At that time, there was a great deal of discussion by residents, both pro and con. And as I recall, prior to the council vote, Recreation Director Bill Keough made a presentation in council chambers explaining the size, scope, and projected cost of the project. At that time, some residents were concerned about the cost, others about ensuring the skate park would be a safe environment. But what was most pressing was the proposed location, which was adjacent to the Kitty Park at Degnan Playground, which seemed to derail that proposal. And talk of reviving the skate park has popped up occasionally over the years. In fact, back in February of 2015, I spoke to the council about a master plan for the Valley Arts District that I had found online, which was created by the nonprofit group HANDS and funded by a New Jersey Transit Initiative called Together North Jersey. That 50-page plan, created with the input of local residents and community members, included proposals for a number of new parks in the Valley District, including turning the old gas station and parking lot on the corner of Valley and Mitchell into a skate park and bike shop. Unfortunately, at that time, no member of the town council or mayor's office seemed to know anything about these plans, and the town instead moved the local police substation from the building adjacent to Luna Stage into that space at a cost of approximately $350,000 to rehab the building and the parking lot. And now, seemingly out of nowhere comes this resolution to spend $169,000 on construction and equipment for a skate park on a parcel of land behind Jenkins Playground, that it has got to be one of the more obscure places in West Orange. I say out of nowhere because I had to do some searching to find any information on this current proposal, none in print and a little bit in social media. After some research, I found a post by Mayor Parisi on his mayor Facebook page. It was also shared on a Facebook page entitled "West Orange Needs A Skate Park," that was dated June 21st, and said, quote, "Finally, West Orange Skate Park. It has taken a long time, but we are pleased to announce the location of our long-awaited skate park. Jenkins Playground, located behind Fire Headquarters on Valley Road. Fire Department presence nearby. Existing Kitty Playground will not be impacted. Skate Park will be secured and separated from Kitty Playground. Construction will begin shortly. More details to follow." The post features a computer graphic of a generic skate park as an illustration. That same information was shared on the township's official Facebook page the same day, with a satellite photo of the location which had been added. Now, these posts appeared on June 21st, almost a week prior to our last council meeting. If the administration was planning to put this resolution on tonight's agenda, I believe in the public's best interest, Mr. Keough should have come to the June 28 council meeting and made a presentation about the proposal. Yet, curiously, not one mention was made by anyone on the dais about the skate park. Also, I couldn't seem to find any reference to the project in the 2017 town budget. Perhaps Mr. Gross, Mr. Sayers could point out to us on what page of the budget is, this project is listed? I see Mr. Keough in the back tonight, and I hope that he will make a detailed presentation to the council tonight, and, which will give the public a better idea of where and how 169,000 of their tax dollars will be spent before any members of the council vote to approve this resolution. Because I suggest that based on what we have so far, no one could make an informed decision, and certainly have not had, residents haven't had the time to know about, to express their opinions about the cost, safety, and location of this park.
Your time is up.
So tonight, I would ask you to please table this resolution, give residents more time to weigh in on the skate park. It's the most reasonable and responsible action to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Puglisi? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand. See a hand back there? I don't see who it is, but please come on down, and you can speak next. Yes, thank you.
I didn't cut the line, did I? Wait till the end. Anthony Puglisi, Public Information Officer for Essex County, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. Just want to share with you that events in the county, excuse me, at Turtleback Zoo continue in the summer. Wednesdays and Thursdays, we have extended hours at the zoo. We have zouvis on Wednesday evenings, and then throughout the month of July at the Clipper Pavilion, which is by the paddleboat area on Cherry Lane, we have a variety of events and activities to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. So even though you're, you know, people have gone on vacation, we have plenty of activities here, like you do in West Orange, and we just invite you to come out and enjoy the evening with us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, come on up. Yes, you, please. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand, be recognized.
I seem to be the only Llewellyn Park person that wants to get up and speak, but a man comes from 7 Oak Ben Road, Llewellyn Park. I've lived in West Orange now for over 40 years. I've paid my huge share of taxes to both the park and the community of West Orange. I've taken very few services from the community. I've only had one child in public school for one year since I have moved here. And it just seems to me that things are a little out of balance, that we are paying enormous taxes to the community, plus we have to pay additional tax to the park, which we understand. Unfortunately, our property values have declined enormously, and it's become very, very difficult to sell any houses at all in Llewellyn Park. People are taking great losses when they're selling their houses. Most of us have put in big improvements. I've put on in addition, I've constantly improved the house in the 40 years I've lived there. And by assessing us again, because we've already paid one big assessment in order to put in the new sewer system, we're being, it's going to be very, very hard for any of us to sell our houses. I'm 82 years old. I would like to know that I will be able to sell my house in the near future at a decent value. And I think it's going to become impossible for us if you put another assessment on us. I don't think any of us will be able to sell. That's what I want you to understand. I don't know what percentage we pay towards the town. We are all very taxed very heavily. Whether, I don't know what percentage we pay into the town, I don't know what services we receive from the town, but it seems to me it's out of balance. So I hope you'll reconsider this assessment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand.
No.
You've spoken once, Mr. Verd.
No.
No, no, this is, we're still in public comment. We're about to close public comment, and then we can respond. It's a continuation of when you came up and spoke. Yes. I see a hand. Please come up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. You guys are really dragging this out.
I also live in Llewellyn Park.
Excuse me, could you just, I apologize for interrupting. Could you start with your name, spelling, and your address? No problem.
Lucille Farrrell Scott, F-A-R-R-E-L-L, Scott, S-C-O-T-T, and 4 Edge Hill Road, West Orange, New Jersey. And I sat back there, and I realized that I was not only doing myself, not only my family, but the whole community are great injustice. We are taxed extremely heavily. Our houses really can't be sold. I bought the house, and within three months, the value of my home dropped more than $300,000. And so I'm standing here, I heard the young lady speak, and I realized that in all honesty, I really had to get up and say something. And what I'm saying is that I really believe that we are overtaxed in Llewellyn Park, and that any type of assessment should really be given some type of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Councilman Cirillo, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Seeing no hands, I'm going to close public comment and ask my colleagues and the administration if they would like to respond. I just wonder, before we start going, I wonder if Mr. Laporte, our town engineer, might be able to speak on a couple of the issues that were raised tonight?
He's here.
I'm thinking specifically of the roads question from Mr. Verd, and also the question about appeals. Is this appropriate for you, Mr. Laporte? I can see you're sitting in the back.
No, I don't think you should answer your question. I should ask the other question.
Okay, okay.
That's got nothing to do with that.
Okay. And also, I don't know if you're familiar enough with the code to just maybe mention the bamboo, address the bamboo situation.
I'm not familiar with that particular property, but I'd like to discuss it with the residents.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I know we have some sort of definitive procedures when you have one property owner's vegetation growing into another yard, and I don't know whether you'd be able to explain that particular issue.
Well, in this particular case, I'd like to have...
Okay.
In 62, I think, Undercliffe Terrace South.
That would be fine. Do you want to speak to the other issue about the prioritization of funding of road improvements? If I understood that question correctly?
Yeah, that's more John Post.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. Okay. So just stay cool, Mr. Laporte. Councilman Cirillo? Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, and perhaps Mr. Laporte can elaborate a little bit more on this issue. I don't, what I don't understand is what's happening with the resident association at Llewellyn Park, Council President. This is an issue for the tenant association of Llewellyn Park. It sounds like we have a lot of homeowners that have concerns about the property values decreasing and also the ability to, the ability to resell their properties. It has to start with your resident association, because they are the group, under your incorporation process, they are the group that's supposed to look out after your interests as part of your setup and the way the community is gated. So, a long time ago, Council President, as you know, in 1864, when the community decided to be an independent gated community, a private resident association was formed to address exactly the concerns that are being brought up today. Now, just to bring everyone up to date, there was an agreement that was negotiated a couple of years ago, three or four years ago now, between the tenant association, the resident assoc, not the tenant, I'm sorry, the resident association and the township of West Orange to improve on the infrastructure. The township of West Orange floated bonds to fix the roads and the sewer system infrastructure. Now, that decision was made at the local level. It was made with your tenant, with your resident association's input. So, this is, this is, this is an issue that has to go back to the resident association. I don't want to say that, you know, we're not responsible in any, or we don't want to be responsive to your commentary and your perspective, but you really have to go to your resident association. It's not, it's not a matter that would need to be addressed at this stage. Again, with respect to your special assessment, that special assessment was negotiated with the township of West Orange. All we did was float bonds for the resident association so that you can get a preferred interest rate at that time, because a municipal interest rate, when floated by a township, you get, we get a favorable interest rate. And what we did was we floated the bonds for the association, but a special assessment was placed by your association to each resident. So it has to go back over there, and then, and then, you know, with respect to your, the issues of taxation, we can answer that, but as it relates to the infrastructure and the roads, that's a resident association issue, and we're going to have to take a pass. We're in the wrong place. As it relates to taxation, yes, just for the public's benefit, taxation, you know, I pay regular taxes. I pay $13,000 in property taxes, but my property's open. It's a public property. When Llewellyn Park was created, in the setup that was created, Llewellyn Park decided it was going to be a private property. So Llewellyn Park is assessed not only the regular taxation that I'm assessed, but also an additional assessment for being a private and gated community. So, any, as it relates to any issues pertaining to the roads, pertaining to the infrastructure, please engage your resident association, because I don't, it's really alarming to hear that while the rest of West Orange, the rest of our community, our property values are going up. I know my property values have gone up. A lot of homes are historically selling for the first time in the last seven years. There's been reports in the newspapers, and I'm alarmed to hear that at Llewellyn Park, properties are not, are actually decreasing severely in value. Please bring it to your resident association and ring the alarm there, and make sure your representatives know that this is happening. So, Council President, I don't know if you would like Mr. Laporte to address the issue of the arrangement that was negotiated a long, a long time ago as it relates to the bonds, or we want to take a pass.
No, Mr. Verd, this is not the appropriate time for people in the audience to ask a
question. I understand, I understand you don't like the way that we do. I understand, but we cannot have a dialogue. This is not the way we typically do things.
Okay. When can we have a dialogue?
You're more than welcome to come to the next council meeting and respond. It's just too, I understand.
Call anyone.
I understand, Mr. Verd, I understand. But I'm just trying to, please, please, if I could just finish addressing him.
The gentleman spoke, I'd like to assess him, because he's off the wall when he says he can't understand.
Mr. Verd, Mr. Verd. I apologize. I got your name wrong. I apologize for getting your name wrong. The process that we use here at the council meetings is to have the public comment, not to have a dialogue back and forth. So what you're doing right now is having that dialogue. And if you'd like to speak, we can speak after the meeting. You can contact the council people or the administration in between meetings, or you can come to the next meeting. But if we engage in this dialogue, we're going to have a long, lengthy meeting. So we don't allow this type of dialogue and follow-up questions.
I've been in the town these one or two years, okay? I'm familiar with Councilman Parisi, now Mayor Parisi, okay? He spoke to me when I first came to town, a year or two, I mean, a year or two, 23, 24 years ago. So, I don't understand, and we're not having dialogue, why it's so off the wall when I have just a basic, basic question of gated communities and not gated communities. We can talk forever, but that's a valid thing. And for this gentleman to say he doesn't understand it, I still work, and I hear it every day. So it is possible. We pay a high rate in this town in taxes. We do, okay? And we pay to the park, and now we get assessed for this. Now, what can we understand that they agreed to pay for the sewers and the roads in private community? The town paid 11.2%, which means we pay approximately 88%. I don't understand who pays for that, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I apologize for interrupting you. I just need to reiterate that this is not something that we allow at the council meetings. And if you want to stay around till the end of the meeting, I'll be happy to talk with you and get you in touch with everybody that you need to. We're also going to address this issue somewhat. Mr. Gross has already said he understands your question. There's also on the agenda tonight legislation that has to do with the Llewellyn Park financing project. So there will be further discussion about this, and hopefully that will make things clearer to you. But we can't engage in this, in this dialogue. Thank you.
Council President, I have a cold, so it's not easy for me to speak, but I just want everybody to understand, ordinarily, the township does not make sewer improvements or road improvements in a private community. It's their responsibility. In this particular instance, the committee of managers of the park, the managing body of the park, came to the township back in 2011, 2012, I think it was 2011, and asked us, as a favor frankly, for which many people have thanked us in the park, to undertake the financing for this project, because we could do it at a much better rate than they could and get the job done more quickly and in better fashion. So that was done back in 2011, 2012, and there was no negotiation. The way that the local improvement law works is that the private community has to pay us back for the work that was done. And they do so in proportionate to their individual property in the park and it's, whatever its tax status is. I understand the tax appeal question that came up from one of the residents of the park. I can't give legal advice to private residents. I suggest that that resident go to a private attorney and make the same inquiry, and they'll get some answers. But that's just by way of a little bit of background why we're here today on this particular issue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Casey. Councilman Cirillo, you have the floor.
Sure, I just wanted to say that I can make myself available, and I can talk to you like in a, in a bit, and just, yeah, absolutely. Like, I'll make myself available, because I really want to hear what's going on. I don't understand, again, I don't understand why we're coming back with this issue when we thought that this was behind us in 2011 and 2012, and what has changed since. So thank you, Council President. The issue of the sidewalks, what I didn't understand about the speaker, Mr. Daniel, and thank you for bringing that issue up, Mount Pleasant and Prospect Avenue. I don't know the correlation between the investment being made in the property and a public improvement. I, for me, there's no correlation. I don't think one goes with the other. So I need to be convinced that there's a high demand for sidewalks at that corner. I actually live right down the street, and I, there is a bus stop there. I've seen, I believe, Route 71 arcs right down, right around the corner, but I really don't see any pedestrian traffic, and I don't want to attract pedestrian traffic if we don't have to at that corner. So I, I need to be convinced, perhaps you can send me an email, on the correlation between the investment going on in that corner and a need for a public improvement. My email is V, as in Victor, Cirillo, C-I-R-I-L-O, at westorange.org. Lastly, I do want to talk about the skating ramp. I believe it's a, it's a wise investment, especially for our Valley Road corridor. Our children, as you know, there's a high concentration of population in that part of town, and it's definitely in the, in the community's best interest, not only the community that is in that area, but also in the entire township, to have some sort of recreation options for the kids. The, you know, the skateboarding community is growing, and I'd much rather see kids skateboarding than causing problems in the oldest part of our community. So I wholeheartedly support this initiative, and I've had since it was originally brought to the table. Now, the question is, is it going to be paid by bonding, or is it going to be paid out of the general fund?
It's going to be paid by a bond that was already approved by the council back in 2011, 2010.
When we first approved it. Okay. So thank you for answering my question, and thank you for the rest of the speakers for coming up and expressing their points. I did see the ordinance, Ms. Guyer's, thank you. I actually almost bought a house on Under Cliff, at the other side. It's a beautiful street with a nice view of Manhattan, and I do know that the homes on the bottom, it's not only the bamboo, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of landscaping that needs to improve, but it's just, you know, it's a very forestry area, including Under Cliff. I mean, there are a lot of trees up and down the street. But I do need to be educated more as to the dangers of bamboo, and, you know, why bamboo, or is it just a, you know, is it just like an issue of code enforcement? Whether, it's an issue whether of landscaping needing to be cut up or addressed. So if we can stay in touch, again, it's vcirillo@westorange.org, and just let me know a little bit more about that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak next?
Sure.
Councilman?
Same thing. Councilman Cirillo, thank you for your comments too about the, for the residents in Llewellyn Park. Thank you for coming out. It's already really been mentioned, the resolution that we have in front of us this evening is approving now the assessments that you have just received. This was from an ordinance that was approved back in 2011 for the bonding, for the roads, sewers, the system, drainage, associated repair, reconstruction, repaving on roads that had not been touched in 150 years. As our legal counsel said, the bond was approved through the council because, through the township because of a better bonding rate as a favor to Llewellyn Park residents. To Mr. Sturberg's response, there are improvements that are done in private communities, as you mentioned, mentioned Eagle Ridge, we have many others, that the township does reimburse on some of those. This was a special project for the drainage and sewer work that was done in Llewellyn Park through the committee of managers to approve 3.6800, $3,684,000 in public debt. Right, because there was an additional $500,000 that the township also contributed.
Is that their meeting last?
Yes. So that's what the resolution is before us this evening. Mr. Daniel made comments about the planning board. The July council, planning board meeting had been canceled, and in June I had recused, I don't see Mr. Dun.
He left.
Oh, well. In June I had recused myself from the planning board meeting because he did mention the Goddard School as a 20-year owner and director of First Mountain Preschool on Pleasant Valley Way. That was conflict of interest for me. I have not seen the approved resolution that he was discussing all of the details, I guess, that were discussed at the planning board meeting. He's absolutely right. We do have a complete streets policy program. The county also has a complete streets policy program. So many of the issues that he raised, I will be curious to see what is in that planning board resolution that has not been made public yet. Ms. Guyer's on this bamboo. It is such an invasive species. I had never seen an ordinance on it, but it definitely is a property maintenance issue. Our town forester is, will be in town tomorrow. It is a discussion that the town engineer said that he would have. Interesting to see a separate ordinance on, specifically for bamboo. I really didn't think that that was necessary, because I would think that our property maintenance ordinances that are already in place should take care of that. So I would also be curious to hear that if this sounds like a property maintenance issue, I don't see why we would need a separate ordinance just for bamboo. But we'll follow up on it to see if that's necessary. Mark, thank you for your kind words and your comments. Claire, there was so much in that information that you just read off. Kudos for you to be able to read all of that on the screen. I would not have been able to do that. You mentioned again that Together New Jersey Plan. I don't know of one individual in West Orange that was part of that plan. And, you know, considering I've been on the planning board now for 17 years, it was a surprise to see how much information. I really have not spoken to anyone in that. As far as the skate park, I know Bill is here, if you would like to make comment on that. I too found out about it on Facebook. I still think it is an excellent idea. The funds were approved, appropriated in 2011. Jenkins Park, it is obscure, but it seems like the perfect location, because it is right behind the firehouse on Valley Road there, on Rose Terrace, and, you know, there would be constant activity with the fire department. It's well-lit. There was a resident meeting. Residents did come out. They were in favor of the park. There was no opposition at that time. And again, this was brought up, as you mentioned, in 2010. Same families that were there in 2010 have still been vocal and persistent on having a skate park somewhere in town. So that just seems like a prime location for them. And I would like to hear what Mr. Gross has to say about the residents, for all of the residents in Llewellyn Park, to follow up on that discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. Council?
Thank you, Council President. Mark, thank you for your kind words, and I hope you got to go there. I hope you got the same feeling that we all got, and, you know, it's good, it's good to hear positives from our residents. Ms. Guyer, you know, I know Mr. Lindstrom will look into it, you know, Mr. Por, and, you know, it's property maintenance, but we also make sure, you know, you've invested in your property, and your neighbors should feel the same way. So, like I said, I know it'll be addressed and stuff like that. Talking about what Mr. Daniels was here, and he's gone now, is our whole complete streets. The whole complete street scheme is, of course, making the township more accessible, more mobile for pedestrians and the safety and of cars and things, and these are things being looked at. But certain roadways, the township has no control over, you know, particularly Mount Pleasant and Prospect. Prospect is the county roadway. Mount Pleasant is a state highway. But they are working with us, and they are looking at our complete streets, and eventually you'll be seeing the road diet functions that are going to be coming out, a lot of things that are happening on Main Street here, particularly by Edison and the school. Then you'll see the complete, the new crosswalking at the community house. So little by little, as the road diet comes into play, you'll see a lot of these things. And not to repeat myself, but if anybody wants to learn more about road diet and complete streets, go to the township website at www.westorange.org, go to Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board Committee, and click on Complete Streets and Road Diet. These are an hour and a half presentations that take you through, show you exactly what we plan to do and what other communities throughout the state of New Jersey are doing for road diet. I'm not going to talk much about the Llewellyn Park issue. I know Mr. Gross will point, but the thing I must say is that the committee of managers, and I think it was 2012, because I was just on the council when we voted on this. I mean, I could be wrong, I'm not really sure.
It's in our resolution.
Okay. But what you're forgetting is too, is how But what you're forgetting is too, is how much the township saved you. I understand what you're saying about the cost and your assessments, but listen, Mr. Gross, because how much money the township saved you by doing what we did instead of letting you do it on your own. I think it was about a million dollars in, in savings. So these are the things you have to look at. I understand taxes are high. Ma'am, Scott, when you came about your property and saying is, I, I don't understand it because all the houses that I've seen going for sale, particularly in a lot of neighborhoods and neighborhoods that Councilman Kokoviac, Council President Kokoviac, Councilwoman McCartney and I live in, I mean, houses are going for 90, 100, 120,000 over asking price. So I just don't understand where your numbers are coming from and understand, but yes, taxes are taxes, but the township spends its money in, in a productive way and also there are things that are above and beyond our control. But I, I don't, I, I just don't understand where you're saying, you know, if you lost 300,000, I'm sorry about that, but I, I just don't get it. And thank you. And Mr. Beglisi, of course, our thanks to the county for all the things that you do for the township, the benefits you bring to us with all the facilities. And the one thing I will have to ask you, I want to ask you is, are you going to help us with our, you know, controlling traffic and more of our complete streets because it gets really out of hand on, on some great days at the zoo? But thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. So Ms. Kyers, thank you, your husband, for coming down this evening.
Hi, Dad.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your dad, how you doing? Very young looking. I was going to say, you know, maybe you can take my study. So, but then seriously, I haven't seen you in a while. I remember you used to come to the school board meetings. Is there, my question, I guess I'm going to ask Ms. Gary Adams, I was going to call her tomorrow, but is there a height on vegetation of how high it can grow? I mean, Mr. Sayers, do you know offhand or?
I don't know.
Okay. Because that is a question, because even for that, it's off the property line. I would think that there should be some kind of height restriction.
I'm not sure.
You know, unless you're, you're, you're a tree or, you know. So that is a question I have written down in my notes to ask because I'm curious and Mr. Lapore, just when you're dealing with this, with the forester, if, if that could help her, her cause there. Mr. Daniels, I know, had left and I know my colleague had recused herself, but he could also go to the, the county board meeting, correct, for the issues with the, with the street, if, with the concerns with the sidewalks. I know he's looking for us, but I don't know what's appropriate for.
County has the same.
The county, the county can even also bounce it back if it's approved, asking for that too, I would imagine, right?
Right.
Okay. That was my question there. And to all the Llewellyn Park residents, thank you all for coming down. I, I understand your concerns and when we get to that part in, in the, when we're talking about the resolution, I have a few questions for Mr. Gross, so I look forward to his explanation. I wasn't on the council back then. But I, I do understand with the private communities, how, you know, the township has assisted in the past and what we can and cannot do for them. Some items are passed through. I know you mentioned Eagle Ridge and as Councilwoman McCartney stated, you know, your community goes back so many years, so infrastructure was a little more complicated where Eagle Ridge was a newer development, smaller, much smaller community. And so, you know, there's the price comparison there. But I look forward to discussion with Mr. Gross in a little bit. Mr. Myers, yes, Ms. Morelli has been a great advocate for this cause with the, and, and some of the residents in the township. So I'm, I'm glad everyone is working together and it's great as a community and that's what we're here for, for folks to come down, talk to us and we could see what we could do to get things moving and shaken. So I'm glad we were able to get that going and we appreciate all the information that the residents have brought us in regards to aging in place. And let's see. And Ms. Claire Kokoviac, thank you for coming down and mentioning all that you mentioned about the skate park. I do see Mr. Keough here. We talked about Degnan Park way back then. There was also talk to try to put that skateboard park at Conforty Avenue with the schools, on the school property back in the day. When I was on the school board and I felt that wasn't a good fit there. I felt it was, would be a dangerous situation because of all the late buses and whatnot. It's a hard complex. It's an overcrowded complex and that is what's tough. We haven't had a discussion and I guess my question was Mr. Sayers too. I know we have the bond, but I remember from my conversation, we had a lot of talk about renovations at the pool. So I'm assuming there's money there from the bond that you can do this project now? Because I don't remember the discussion budget time in regards to the skateboard park.
What project are you talking about?
The skateboard park. You said it was from this, this bond?
No, no, it's from 10-year, from 2010.
Oh, oh, okay.
2010.
Oh, oh, I wasn't here. That's why I don't remember it. But, and regardless, I know one of the big issues when we were discussing it back then on my side on the school board, and we weren't comfortable having it on the Conforty Avenue field, you know, you, you want it in a place where the police, it could be monitored. And I do like the idea, and I'm going to have some questions for Mr. Keough. I do like the idea of it being by the, the fire department and with the cameras. And so I just, you know, I'll reserve the rest of my questions for Mr. Keough when he gets up to speak. But thank you, everyone, for coming down. And that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel is not here, so it's a bit difficult to respond to him, but I was at the planning board meeting in which this project is discussed. It's a very problematic, problematic location. It's a nine-sided piece of property with two frontages on both Prospect and Mount Pleasant. And on the Mount Pleasant side, there's not a whole lot of room there now. And one of the big problems is that there is this huge boulder which runs almost to the property line on Mount Pleasant Avenue. So there was a significant discussion at the planning board meeting. We haven't seen the actual text of the resolution, I don't believe. And that will, the resolution is what follows all of the discussion and, and lays out the exact findings of the planning board. But I think Councilwoman Castellino's idea is, is a good one. It's just a very difficult location to do anything on the property. I, I spoke to Mr. Daniel briefly there and explained to him that, to a great degree, the council, the town council does not have a lot of authority having to do with this particular project. That's why it's before the planning board. Ms. Kyers, I appreciate you coming here and I really appreciate you doing the research about Livingston and their bamboo ordinance. It's quite substantial. And I'm sorry you're having this issue, but I, I think that as a follow-up to you coming here, that we will be able to address your issues. And if not, please come to the next council meeting and let us know. And you can let your husband know that, that he was mistaken. You're slightly, he's slightly taller than. Ms. Silvestri, I agree with everything you said about the project, about the skate park. To my way of thinking, it's, it's something that should have considerable community discussion and it hasn't been at this point. And I have some real concerns about what I would consider to be a very nice-to-have project in the midst of us raising our, the municipal property taxes a little bit more than 2% this year. We've, since 2010, we've increased our total outstanding unauthorized debt, $20 million. It's 34% since 2010. And our debt service costs on an annual basis since, in that time, have gone up another two and a half million dollars. And this, we have spent a ton of money this year. We issued a, authorized an issue to bond for a little more than eight and a half million dollars so far this year for some very needed equipment. We needed street sweepers. We needed a ton of police vehicles. We needed a, a fire apparatus. We're spending a lot of money on must haves. And while I think the skate park is, is a good idea, I would like to see us start to get a better handle on our debt costs before we move to this sort of project. And I also think we should have more discussion about the, what the community thinks about this. Just to follow up on a little bit before I turn it over to Mr. Gross about Llewellyn The township did a huge, huge favor, not just a little favor, a huge favor to Llewellyn Park because Llewellyn Park was able to do this construction. It's roughly almost four and a half million dollars in the assessment that's going against the, the property owners there, who were able to borrow money for a 15-year period at 1.8% interest. Now, that amounts to about $560,000 in interest and debt service costs, I'm sorry, interest costs over the 15-year period. But if the Llewellyn Park property owners had had to borrow that money on their own, the debt service, the, the interest costs would have been many times that because they would not have been able to borrow under the town's debt rating and might have, instead of 1.8%, might have had to pay eight 10% interest, which would have made the cost incredibly onerous. So what the township did, in addition to making its, its credit rating available to Llewellyn Park property owners, we also threw in another $550,000 to cover cost overruns or, I, I know we've argued about what the word is, but additional work that, that, that was needed on the project. And so I understand that these costs are, are hurt, are potentially hurting the property owners there. But the township has done a considerable favor for everybody and, and the way that, that we've done this is to put an assessment on the property in order to get paid back. I'll just let Mr. Gross perhaps try to address Mr. Sterberg's question because I clearly, I clearly am unable to do so. So please, Mr. Gross.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to give a brief overview of the project.
Can I just say one thing before you start?
Sure.
John, I just want to correct any misimpressions because the township has never done this for a similarly sized community in West Orange. We've never done this for Eagle Ridge and frankly, we wouldn't, I don't think, but for any other condominium association. It was done on Ridge Road, which is a small private road with perhaps a dozen, 15 residents on it back in the 1990s. It was done on Oak Road many years before that in connection with a development project. And as far as I know, this is the only time it's ever been done. So just to be clear.
Mr. Gross.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to touch on some, some of the questions or, and also give an overview of the project. Back in 2011, the committee of managers approached the town council requesting assistance with finance, with financing the project. At that point in time, they were prepared to contribute a half a million dollars towards the, louder?
A little louder.
Okay.
Can we shut that ear?
I'm getting older, John.
Susan, shut that ear.
Right behind him, John.
Okay. In, in around 2011, the committee of managers approached town council and the mayor for support in order to finance a project on the private roads. And I think the distinction there obviously is that the Llewellyn Park roads are private and being such, the, the, as far as road improvements are concerned, the municipality is not permitted to contribute towards that. So as part of that, as, as was mentioned before, the, the big advantage was, was the, the financing. The project in whole ended up being, and I'm going to use round numbers, approximately $4.8 million, of which the committee of managers contributed in cash $550,000. And the, the township contributed through its own bonding powers, $550,000. So the final cost of the project to be assessed to the members is approximately, excuse me, 3.8 million with, with all costs in. Those costs are being distributed amongst the affected property owners on a dollar-for-dollar basis. So the assessment is a flat dollar amount. That flat dollar amount is calculated by using the assessed value as of this year. But that, that's, at that point in time, any, any connection to the assessed value ends. Because the way these things work is that assessment is, has to be awarded in a, in a specific date and a specific time and a specific amount. And from that point forward, that's assessed to the individual properties. There's different ways of doing it, could have been, different ways it could have been done based on other metrics like number of feet, property footage, property area, there's a whole slew of different things that could be done. The key is that it's, it's done in a, in a fair and equitable manner. So the, we, we chose to use property assessed valuation. And that was, that, that was a decision that was made back when the committee of managers approached the township and in, in the initial ordinance, it was designated that that was going to be the methodology that we would use. The, the assessment, the average assessment is approximately $20,000 a property. And the, that can, that can be financed over 15-year period. It's really up to the individual property owner to determine whether they want to finance it over the 15-year period or pay it off at any point in time. It is, and it's at their discretion. The rate is 1.84%. So if a property owner does choose to it, that would be the rate that they will be charged. And the, the estimates tonight are approximately correct, it's probably about $1.1 million savings over what would have, if, if the committee of managers had to actually go out and, and get commercial financing for, for this project.
Can you repeat that, John? I'm sorry. The, the issue of maybe reissuing that debt or refinancing?
Like, you know, hindsight's 2020, but in, in terms of looking back, probably somewhere in the area of $1.1 million saving in interest if, 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 if this project had to go out into private financing. So.
That was the cost per segment, 4.2.
I think that pretty much touches most of the basis of things that were discussed tonight. I'll turn it back to Council President.
Okay. Are there any follow-up comments from my colleagues?
I do have a follow-up and, and since he's a financial expert, if, let's say, okay, so the average assessment is $20,000 on the improvement. Can a homeowner take, I guess, an equity loan to pay that off, whatever the aggregate is? But it would probably be at a higher interest rate, correct?
That's a question. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I'm just saying for, let's say, you know, for.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to suggest anybody to borrow money, you know, on, on that basis. They're going to have to decide that themselves.
Right. Because just, just options that, you know, since the issues were brought up, you know, property values being affected or difficult financial situations, it's just, just an option. But let's say hypothetically that's done, you'd probably be paying a higher interest rate.
Given the, the target of interest rates, yes.
Yes.
Oh, you're saying, what you're, what you're saying is that they decided to take a home equity line to pay off the whole thing now?
Right, right.
As opposed to, yeah, I wouldn't, I would think that would be, you'd be, you'd be in the negative there.
Please. Council President.
It's more of a personal.
Councilwoman Cirillo has the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Council President.
Please, please, as, as I've said before, this is not the way we conduct the meetings. I understand that you want to speak. I understand that you want to speak.
I don't understand, but I need, I need a question.
I understand, I understand. All I can say is that this is not the way we conduct our meetings. We'll be happy if you want to stay around or leave your name and phone number. I would think I and all my colleagues would be happy to follow up with you. But we cannot conduct the meeting this way. I'm sorry.
Council President, what you might consider doing in view of the nature of this resolution is to take it off consent agenda, have it considered separately perhaps first. At that time, entertain questions about it, answer them and be done with it.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to do that if my colleagues are, are willing to do that. But I want to get back. Councilman Guarino has the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I mean, if we're going to, whatever, Mr. Gross, what I'm saying is too, net, net, we. saved the residents almost a million and a half dollars, 1.2 million dollars, if they had to do this on their own.
Yes, at least.
Okay. And you also said they have an option of either taking the assessment and paying it off in one lump sum payment or flowing it out 15 years.
Or any option.
Or any option.
For instance, you could, a resident could pay for the first two or three years and then decide to pay it off. So it's not, there's no decision, it's not like you have to make a decision now, it can be made at any time.
Okay. And if, Council President, may I ask Mr. LaPore a question?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay, Mr. LaPore. I'll wait till you get away, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. LaPore. I just want to give you a hypothetical if-then. I know we spoke about this four years ago, maybe even five years ago, but I'm saying is, if this wasn't done, what would have happened?
Well, first of all, you'd find much further deterioration of the roads and the sewer systems in Llewellyn Park. If this were to happen outside the park, I think the value of the properties in West Orange where these neighborhoods would be deteriorating would decline. There'd be much less desirability for people to want to live in a neighborhood or municipality where their infrastructure is deteriorating.
Okay. One other question I have too, and you see, we actually answered one of mine about the property values because if the deterioration and if the roadways would have caved in, the sewers would have caved in and all that, that would have had a negative impact on the values of the property owners. We're also, now, you may not be the expert for this, but if those sewer lines did cave in and anything happened, how would they be covered or what kind of impact would have had on your insurance?
On whose insurance?
On the homeowner's insurance.
I'm not sure how that would impact, but certainly there'd be a, I think, an even bigger financial impact on Llewellyn Park as a whole because now they would have to correct infrastructure that has failed. And they'd have to probably pay much higher cost to get it fixed than they would be to plan improvements on a deteriorating system that still functions but to extend its life.
Right. And if the system failed, there'll be an additional expense to do cleanup too, am I correct?
Yes, it would be just more costly all around.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. LaPore.
Is there anyone else?
I just have a quick question. Just the communication of this, seems that some folks came here tonight concerned. Were there meetings held in the park by the association? So there was outreach to the residents?
Yeah, we've had multiple meetings. We had two, I don't even want to put a number on it, meetings with the members and the leadership of the Committee of Managers. We did two mailings out to every resident. We had a hearing about six weeks ago, which again, every property owner was notified by certified mail. So they've received two certified mailings on this. There's been a lot of outreach and a lot of back and forth.
Okay.
And we attended that meeting and very few people showed up with very few questions.
Our understanding was that the Committee of Managers also had meetings on it as well.
All right, thank you.
Just to follow up on Mr. Casers, what I thought was a good recommendation is to pull the legislation and so we can have a full discussion as soon as possible. And then also allow people to come up and speak again on the specific resolution as is allowed under our ordinance. Are you guys okay with that? Can I hear some discussion, agree, disagree?
I sort of feel that it isn't necessary, but there are so many people here that do have questions that I am curious to know what those questions are and why does it seem that, you know, he's ready to tell me.
Please, we're moving, Mrs. Sturberg.
We're trying to have the discussion.
I understand that you want to talk.
No, 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 but we're trying to have a discussion, we're trying to have a separate discussion.
I got a call in Florida about four months ago saying to me that some people, I never knew about this. How could you not? It's not about Jesus.
Mrs. Sturberg, we're discussing now allowing you to come up very soon to express yourself further. If we could just move along with this, we'll get to you in just a second. I really want to ask you as graciously as possible to please stop interrupting the meeting. Thank you. Your thoughts? I'm okay to do it that way. Councilwoman agrees.
I am saying I am okay to do it. I understand the concern over here because there are saying publicly that there have been numerous meetings. We were not, we see it as a resolution, an ordinance for the bond. We did not, we were not in attendance, there were mailings, but there are quite a few people here that seem to have questions. And I think if there's a way to clarify that, we can do that right now.
I'm okay, but I don't want to get into back and forth dialogue. If somebody has a question, they come up, ask their question, hopefully we clarify, but, you know, we could, you know, otherwise, you know, the folks, we could get their questions answered after the meeting, whether it's tonight or tomorrow, and they could, you know, spend an hour conversing with staff.
So we have a majority of the council that wants to move in that direction. Do you guys, Councilman Cirillo, Councilman Guarino, do you have thoughts?
Sure, I think we've addressed all the questions. I don't see a need to continue, Council President, that's my opinion. I mean, I think what's left is personal decisions that the homeowners have to make, and they need to talk to their Committee of Managers and address these concerns, especially if property values are being affected.
Councilman Guarino?
You know, I just got this gut feeling that the Committee of Managers didn't communicate to the homeowners the proper information, or are some of the homeowners just being ignorant to the fact that you've got to pay for what was done? But I'd like to hear, to get an idea that who did their job and who didn't do their job. So I think the only fair thing is to hear some more questions, but I don't think it should be a cavalcade of 20 questions. I mean, you know, ask your question and then, you know, move on. That's what I would--
That sounds good. So we're agreed, that's what we'll do. As soon as we move through the earlier part of the agenda, and we really can't because Madam Clerk--
[laughing]
She didn't faint or anything, did she?
No. She figured we'd be a while.
So we will move this to the top of the agenda and we will allow public comment again. We'll move forward on the meeting. I don't know, I guess I could, I could move this--
It's not about money, it's about humans. I got a call from people concerned. And I'm okay. I never called in Florida, that some people, because we leave for money, but donate for money. That's why I got involved, okay?
Yes, Mrs. Sturberg, we work for you. I understand that. You're my boss, you're our boss. And so I feel uncomfortable asking you to, yes, absolutely, I feel uncomfortable asking you to follow the protocol of the meeting. We're going to have you, give you the ability to come up and speak in just a few minutes if you can just hold on for a minute, please. We're going to move ahead on the agenda without Madam Clerk, just in the interest of time. Before we go to the consent agenda, I'm just going to go through these other issues. The approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, public meeting in the ABC Board Executive--
Consent.
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 The report of township officers, none. A reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions about the bills?
Consent.
Okay. We're now going to move to the consent agenda. We've already agreed that we're going to pull Resolution 160-17, West Orange Llewellyn Park Sewer and Road Improvements.
And 165.
Is there anyone else who would like to pull any other or ask questions? Councilwoman?
165 by Mr. Keos, here to speak for the ramp, for the skateboard park.
Is there anyone else who wants to pull legislation or to ask questions?
Nope. 165, so she already pulled them when I wanted to.
Okay. Just so that the audience knows, there were two more or less late additions to the agenda. So if you were looking online on Friday, you may not have seen these. One is a resolution to award Historical Architectural Services contract for historic preservation to expand a certified local government grant by the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. And there's also a Resolution 168-17. It's a resolution authorizing the township to enter into agreement with the National ovarian cancer coalition for an upcoming 5K race. And Madam Clerk is--
I'm so sorry. I'll fill her in.
Okay.
All right. Council President, may I just--
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, just going back to the 167-17, the Historical Architectural Services, when we did receive that late, I did forward it to the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I know they have a meeting tomorrow if you are going to attend.
Yes.
One of the questions that Mr. Feeney asked was that if they haven't come up with the project, but if they do come up with a project, this particular grant has a matching funds. So we know that was his questions on where do we go with that? And I told him it would all be considered on the merit of the project if one is determined and they do actually submit an application, that that would come back to the council for approval. So just so you know, he has a copy of this resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I hope that Mr. Gross has brought you up to speed. We had two resolutions that we wanted to pull.
Yes.
And did anyone have any questions? The two resolutions to pull are 160-17 and 165-17.
She's over to pull, yeah, I had questions.
Here, we pull them.
Okay. I had a, I had a question about Resolution 166-17. It's a resolution to award a contract to GTBM Inc. for info cop software license. This is basically software to be able to write and transmit traffic tickets by the police electronically, digitally. And just wanted to follow up with the administration. There's, we're essentially going to extend part of the contract that already exists.
We're not extending, this will be a new contract starting, which is only a fractional part of the old contract.
Right, so the original contract also included much higher cost per ticket in order to finance a variety of equipment that was related to this. Now we have the equipment in place and it's just going to be the ticket cost.
Right.
And what I wanted to ask, I just wanted to get clear on this because, as you know, you and I have been back and forth, this is guaranteeing, this contract, as did the previous one, guaranteed minimum of writing 10,000 tickets a year.
Yes.
Either you write the tickets or you pay for them even if you don't write the tickets.
That's correct.
And what I was trying to find out, and you sent the numbers annually, some years we didn't hit the 10,000 and some years we did.
Only the first two years that we were in the system did we not. And since then, we've averaged about 11,000 a year for the past four years.
Okay.
I don't see 10,000 as an issue.
Okay, two questions. One, did we, under the existing contract, did we actually have to pay money for tickets that we didn't write? It seems to me in the budget, we saw some, a number in the budget, and I can't remember for the 2017 budget.
The old contract, the payments were tied to tickets, but they weren't really for tickets. So there was, there were payments, there was a total cost of the project. And so they divvied up, they said, how many, basically they said, how many tickets do you think you could write? We think we can write this many, blah, blah, blah. We didn't write that many. But it would still have cost us, for the most part, the same amount of money because the lion's share of the project was equipment and not the processing. So the answer is yes, technically, we paid for, the metric was more tickets than we actually wrote. But it is not, this contract, that won't happen.
Do you recall what the number was that we had to pay back? The number that we had to pay back under the existing contract?
I think the, I think we had, you don't quote me, but I think it was, I think it was 50,000 that we had, and I think we did 42,000 or 45,000, something like that. I mean, it wasn't half or anything like that, it wasn't the exact--
Do you remember the amount of money that we had to pay back for this? I'm--
It's not payback. Think of, this was a lease, this was a lease payment. It was a graduated lease payment. We paid more upfront and less at the end. And it was like buying a car. We had 60 payments and they happened to define the way we were making the payments. We were going to pay the same amount of money no matter what, with, you know, sans maybe a few thousand tickets at $2, let's say. So this was, because it was a sizable contract. It was a $300,000, $400,000 contract.
Oh, yeah.
So, so they, basically it was, the ticket price was higher, the first 10,000 tickets that we wrote. Now, it took us two years, two and a half years to write the first 10,000 tickets. So we were, we actually benefited from that. Instead of having to pay all that money upfront, we paid most of the money at the end. And the vendor who anticipated getting paid all the money upfront didn't get that. So it actually worked out to our benefit. But we did not write, we did not write 50,000 tickets. So, like I said, I think it was 42,000, 43,000, something like that.
So if I understand you correctly, we did not have to pay money in addition because we didn't write enough tickets?
No, 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 no.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. So my second question was, a substantial portion of the existing contract, which by the way, was before you got here. So if I'm putting you in a difficult position because you don't know the intricacies, then, you know, just say so.
I know all too much about this contract.
Okay, okay. A substantial portion of this financed all of this equipment.
Yes.
And I wanted to know, sort of a two-part question, how has that equipment performed? And what are we going to do to take care of that equipment going forward if it's not part of this contract?
It's performed well. It is nearing its end of its life. In the future, we'll have to look at how to start to replace the equipment. At some point in time, we'll be back to talk to you about that. Right now, we're going to be doing maintenance on a as-needed basis, see how that goes, see just where we stand. There was, there was strong desire to come back this year and ask for capital money to replace the equipment, but we're going to take a look at it and see, you know, how much, how much longer we can extend its life.
Okay. So who's doing, who's maintaining the equipment now? Are we doing it or do we have a vendor that's doing it?
We do not have, we have vendors that we use, but they're, this is decisions that we're making.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get a feel for what's the, see, like the run rate on the maintenance for this equipment right now?
Well, so far, not too much. I mean, we've only maintained it since the first of the year, so we haven't spent too much on it now. Again, I think at some point in time, we're going to start seeing things, especially, and as the technology is changing, that's the bigger part of it. I think that they, there's things that we can't do now that the police department would like to do, you know, and I think that's going to be, I think that is going to be the bigger push than failure of the equipment, is that the desire to expand and use the benefits of today's technology.
Yeah, and it's four or five years old now.
Yeah.
And it's taken a beating. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I think--
Actually, it's closer to seven.
Seven, 2012.
It was obsolete quickly.
I'm sorry, did anybody else want to ask any questions or follow up?
You asked, it was before.
I want to turn this back over to Madam Clerk, please.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 160-17 was pulled, Resolution West Orange Llewellyn Park Sewer and Road Improvements.
Okay. So now we are going to have public comment on this specific piece of legislation. If you want to comment, ask a question, please raise your hand and be recognized by the Chair. And you, again, will have five minutes to speak. Mr. Sturberg, please.
Yes.
That's all we're talking about. You can't talk about anything else. Please. Anyone else want to speak? Please, come on down. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Is there anyone else besides Ms. Scott that wants to speak, ask a question or comment?
First of all, I'd like to thank only the Allopedge out, really. I know it's hard. This started because I got a call in Florida from two doctors who lived here 40 years or something. And they started telling me what was going on, I had no idea. And the people, the new people, people on the board who I don't know, CEOs, what have you, they can afford. These other people couldn't afford. Their income doesn't go up, it goes down. So they called me. Unbeknownst to me, I came back and I made contact with the board, they gave me president or whatever. And I made a call and I mentioned their name and it was like talking to an ice cube. All of a sudden, I could see a change in the phone. And it seemed that there was, people rose up against it, people who couldn't afford it. I know one has left the park. So, we're dealing with people. We're not, money's one thing, but people are another thing. What do you do when you have a house? You live there 40 years and you can't afford the taxes anymore. So, I don't know what you do, but I know there's something we should do. I know, I know the tax laws, for instance, in Cranford, I know that after a certain age, they can't raise taxes if you make below a certain amount of money. I was here paying taxes one day and I came in and a gentleman came up to me and he said, are you a vet? I said, yeah. He says, well, we have $250. How much do you make? I says, we're going to stop talking now because it doesn't make sense. I said, I want to tell them. I says, give it to somebody else who needs it. It doesn't mean I'm less of a vet, but if you have 250, give it to somebody. So, I don't actually see things the right way sometimes. I respect people. I argue a lot, but the humanness of people, we have to understand. I don't need it, you are though, thankfully, but people, some people do and they don't know which way to turn. And maybe we can go bring some programs in this town, not just for Llewellyn Park, for people. Maybe there's some way we take someone applying and help them out because they're there. And I just have one other, oh, we just could talk about this?
That's correct.
Can we talk a little bit about something? It's good for you. It's for you.
No, Mr. Sterberg, please. Let's just, let's just stay-
I just told them to name the field, which I gave, I gave to the mayor. The back of the field, he was going to make it national. My, my house backs up to it. So, I said, when you do, he says, call me one day. He says, should I name it after you? I said, if you do, you don't get it. I says, name it after the war, a soldier, something. And now, I don't, I don't know if it's a regular field and I don't even know what's the name. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? You can be next then, please. And then, there's a gentleman in the back. You can be after her if you'll just come on down to save time. Ms. Scott, please.
I would just like to respond to a couple of the comments. First, I think your statement was very disingenuous. And I, when I spoke initially about the loss of my property taxes, I was not asking for sympathy. I was making a statement because many persons in Llewellyn Park have also suffered that. So, your statement was very, very disingenuous. You're also commenting that you pay $13,000 in property taxes and there's a glut in the market. Houses are being sold for at least over $100,000. I can't understand why the people from Llewellyn Park are saying they cannot sell their houses. That, too, is very disingenuous because I know that you guys know that there's a glut on the homes in Llewellyn Park. And so, while we come here to speak, the way you guys are responding, and this is my estimation, is as if we really don't have any reason or any right to come here and say, you know what? I have a grudge. I'd like to say something and give us that type of respect. And you may be sitting there, but please do not make certain comments to make a person feel less than who they are.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
I'm back again and I'm sorry because I know you all would like to go home. But I did find that a little insulting before. I did find it very insulting. We, I am paying over 40,000 a year plus over 6,000 to the park for over 40 years. Now, you add that up, that's a big part of your budget when you take all of the people from Llewellyn Park. Now, I'm going to look it up. I'm going to try to find out how much of your budget comes from Llewellyn Park and how much we get back in services. I think we get very little back. We get a little bit of police, a little bit of fire, occasionally an ambulance, but we don't ask for much. We don't get any snow plowing. We don't get any garbage removal. We have very few children in the school system. Most of our children go to private schools. I think we get very little back for what we give to this town and we are taxed enormously. And as I said before, we cannot sell our houses. Houses have been on and off the market, the same houses, for six, eight, 10 years. People have been trying to sell their houses. It's not that they can't sell them at a price, they have no buyers. People will not buy them because we are taxed so heavily. So, you've got to rethink what you're doing because we're all going to go back and ask for reduction of our real estate taxes because we are not getting any value from our houses. I am certainly going to try to reduce my taxes next year. Now, if everyone in Llewellyn Park goes and reduces their taxes, where are you? You're counting on our taxes in your budget. So, I think you have to rethink things a little bit. We are not taxed like the rest of the town is. You get a huge amount of money from us. So, I think you have to rethink it a little bit. And as far as bamboo before, you should research it, it's very invasive. It understands no boundaries and it comes across property lines. So, you ought to research bamboo a little so you'll learn a little more about bamboo.
Thank you, Ms. Comas. Does, does anyone like to, would like to respond?
When there are a couple of people?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I totally forgot. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Manfredo Rubens. Manfredo, M-A-N-F-R-E-D-O, Rubens, R-U-E-B-E-N-S. And I'm a recent property owner in Llewellyn Park. I live in Two Forest Way. And first of all, thank you very much for the discussion. For me, this is the first time I participate in such a meeting and it was very enlightening and I think it was a good quality conversation from my, from my standpoint. I do share all the concerns that were raised by some of the property owners in Llewellyn Park because I also perceive it as very hefty, the tax burden that we are carrying. I have a very practical question now because I don't understand the system. If I understood correctly in the discussion, then the township is not responsible for renovation of sewage and, and roads in private communities. This is how I, what I understood. However, the township is responsible for sewage and roads elsewhere on public roads. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any consideration also in the tax rates for that disadvantage that private properties carry? That would be my question. Thank you.
I would ask, Counsel President, what are the advantages to living in Llewellyn Park? That's my answer.
I think, I think I can address that. I mean, the fact of the matter-
Please, Mr. Gross.
Not you paying taxes directly is directly related to your values. And to the extent that your properties are properly valued, and obviously, if not, there's a process for that, to the extent that your properties, property valued, are properly valued, your taxes are written on that basis. Now, your properties are worth what they were when people were willing to buy them in a market based on knowing that they have to maintain their own roads. So, that's, that's a, that's a calculus that goes into when, you know, when people buy property in, in private property, at least that's, that's the concept. So, if your properties ultimately are valued and you can, to the extent that that reflects in your taxes, that's, that's kind of your answer because it's market-driven. So, it's not, it's not like there's a credit because you're private. There's no credits for anybody. You know, somebody could say, well, I don't have a driveway, I need a credit. Well, the credit is, perhaps the market takes that into consideration with the value of your home.
So, just, just very briefly, in New Jersey, taxation is, is known as the ad valorem tax. It is based on the assessed value of your home, which is, or your property, which is supposed to be reflective of the market. And if those two numbers get out of whack, if the assessment gets too far away from the market, what you believe to be the market value, you can appeal the taxes. And just to clarify, the township does reimburse Llewellyn Park property owners annually for both leaf collection and-
Street lighting.
We actually collect them, aren't we? Yeah.
And the collective garbage.
Street lighting.
And we do the streetlights. So, that's just a minor detail, but I just wanted, didn't want to leave that hanging out there. Mr. Rubens raised the issue about what he perceives as the disadvantage, but I believe that our sewer tax applies to the property owners in Llewellyn Park, doesn't it?
Yes. As far as we perform, just like any other resident, we provide the service for treatment and conveyance. Treatment and conveyance.
Yes.
That's an important part.
And just to follow up on ad valorem, everyone who owns property in West Orange is taxed at the exact same rate. So, there's no, unless you're, unless you're a veteran and, or the widow of a veteran.
They're taxed at the same rate even if they're a veteran.
Yes.
There may be credits that you get for different, senior citizen credits, veteran credits.
That depends on your income.
And, and there are other properties that have extra assessments because they happen to, you know, they live in other districts where there's additional assessments. So, it's-
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Counsel President. My meager $13,000 in taxes are at the same level as someone that's paying $40,000 in property taxes because I choose to live in a, you know, a less expensive home in a non-inclusive, exclusive area of the township. I do want to say, Counsel President, that the issue of appealing your property taxes came up and please, I urge anyone that feels that they're unfairly being taxed, please appeal your property taxes. Nobody up here wants to unfairly tax anybody in this township. We all benefit whether you live in Llewellyn Park or whether you live outside of Llewellyn Park. We all want to be treated fairly and we want to make sure that we have a system of fair taxation. That's why we did a revaluation four years ago now of all the properties to make sure we're all paying at the same rate. I choose to live in a home that's not as exclusive and, you know, I pay $30,000, but I'm being taxed fair. So, again, I urge anyone that feels that they're paying too much, please appeal your taxes. April 1st. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you. So, now, we're back to the legislation unless there's any other comments, questions? Does anybody have any questions or comments about the specific legislation? So, I just wanted, if I could, I just wanted to be clear in my mind what we're actually, what the numbers are, the relevant numbers. And I don't know whether, Mr. Gross, you were able to get to the email I sent today, but I just wanted to see if, if, if we can clarify a few issues.
Sure.
Now, this is based on, I guess, the packet, what's known as the packet, which is a series of documents that were sent to Llewellyn Park property owners. And I just was going over some of that material and finally finished up today and just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Because of the numbers, I couldn't follow them. I also sent a spreadsheet of what I had looked at, so I don't know if you have access to that, but that might be sort of an easy way to look at it. I'm also trying to find my email. I'm sorry if you're just, bear with me. Okay. On, on the PDF page four of the packet, the narrative lists the construction costs as well as other costs, giving the total cost excluding financing costs is $4,678,000 and change. Toting the cost, however, gives me a total of $4,678,000 and change, the difference being $249.48, which is the same amount as the given cost of the advertising. Did we leave out the cost of the advertising?
No. I think it's important for you, the narrative is just that, it's a narrative, it's not all-inclusive. It's a, it gives the, for the most part, the broad numbers. There are a few minor expenses that were not in the narrative that are in the actual calculations. So, the, the, all the expenses are included in the project costs as they're identified in the spreadsheets.
Okay. So, the same way with the, the advertising costs, it looks like we were, we were off about another $470?
Yeah, there, and there actually, there was, there was a minor typo in there. The one thing you have to keep in consideration, the, the project, as far as project cost is concerned, the, the assessment is limited to the initial ordinance, which is $3,600, not the exact number, $3,684,305. So, that's, that's, that, their, the project, since the project was a million and a half or a million, 1.1 million more than that, no matter, no matter where you line up all these expenses, they're going to end up at $3,684,305 plus the carrying costs.
Okay. So, then, let's just move to those.
Okay.
Because in that same paragraph, it mentions a financing cost of $87,800 and change.
Right. And that, that does not include some of the cost of issuances. The actual financing costs are about $106,000.
$106,000?
Yeah.
And these, and these are just, these are just the carrying costs that we're going to capitalize or?
No, they're not capitalized at all. They were, they were expended by the township.
Okay.
And they're out of pocket.
Okay.
And they, to be reimbursed.
Okay. So, the $87,000 is-
Is just similar.
Is part of the $106,000?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's the, that's basically the financing cost of the project while it was underway?
From, from inception to September 1st of 2017.
That's when it'll be completed?
Pardon me?
It'll be completed then?
That's when the billing, we anticipate the billing to be due on September 1st.
Okay. And then, there's the spreadsheet on PDF page six that gives a total assessment.
Yeah, that includes, that's, that goes, that includes the interest of someone who's paying through the 15 years. That particular figure includes all the interest.
Okay. So, that's about $4.35 million.
Yeah.
And that would be the total cost to the Llewellyn Park property owners?
If everybody pays the interest, if, nobody pays early and that's over 15-year period, that's what it costs.
Okay. And if we get the interest early, we'll be able to pay off the debt service, so that keeps us whole.
Well, it's interesting. The township's actually, there is one area that the township has to deal with and that's somebody pays it off early. They don't pay, they don't pay the interest, the interest stops. So, we still have to pay the interest on the mortgage.
But why would anybody want to pay off an interest cost of 1.8%?
Ah, believe it or not, they, you know, people are selling houses, there's reasons, there's reasons to do it.
Okay. Okay. Because that's just-
Good news for us is the interest rate's so low that if that happens, it's really not negative.
Okay. That reminds me, you calculated that the savings that we provided to the property owners because of letting them borrow on our credit rating is about 1.1 million?
I would say, I would say, you know, look-
I think-
What's your, yeah, what's your comparative interest rate?
Well, I'm saying, if we're paying 184, three, at three times, if it were three times, that's going to be like 5.5% maybe in a commercial rate. So, it'd be, that would be about, what they're paying is 550, so that'd be a million, one, million one, plus the 550 we put in, you're a million six and change. So, I mean, ah, you know, everybody can take bot shots at that because we're guessing at interest rates, but-
I would just be amazed if somebody could borrow at that rate for a project like this. I know it's secure.
Back then, I mean, yeah, Rach, we're down for everybody.
Yeah. Okay. On that spreadsheet, it had a total assessment of $4.35 million. That's the, that would be the total cost if everybody just paid over the 15 years.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So, if people paid out over those, over that time, the, the interest cost would be about So if people paid out over those, over that time, the, the interest cost would be about almost $564,000?
Yep.
More? Okay. Now, last but not least, how does, how does, is the township impacted by this? Because obviously, our idea was originally that we would provide the financing and we would be whole, it wouldn't cost us anything to do that. But then we also, I think we borrowed $550,000 more or at least authorized that.
Yep.
What's the, what's the impact from the township? Because I know we, we paid money ourselves.
We'll be paying that off at the 1.84% over, over 15 years.
So what's the, what's the, I guess, the, the capital cost for us from this project?
Five, our, our costs were 550 plus, plus the interest.
Oh, okay, so it's just 550. And what do you think would be the interest? Substantially less than 560, I would suppose?
Yeah.
Like maybe a fifth of that or something?
I mean, it's going to be, um, no, 2% and 500,000.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not going to be huge.
That's fine.
I mean, I could, I still want to do it right here.
So my, my last question is, where do we go from here in terms of the property owners? If there's anybody still here or is watching on TV, what will next happen if the council approves this resolution?
Assuming adoption of this resolution, tomorrow we'll start the process of loading the, the assessments into our tax system. There will be an assessment sent out by, somewhere around, in the first week or so of August with a September 1st due date.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councilman?
Yeah, you had a question. I saw you as you're here.
I'm, I'm okay now.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just quick, the gentleman mentioned the, if, if somebody wanted to pay early, where does he go for that?
Right, right here.
Tax law.
Right there, the window out there.
You're watching, yes, tax law.
I can, I can take a check on the way out the door.
Okay, and the second question, Mr. Gross, thank you again for that clarification. The second question is, is the interest rate that the money was borrowed at, is it a fixed rate?
Yes. No, but it's blended to 184. I mean, the 184 is a fixed rate. It's, it's like any other bond, every year has, could have a different rate, there may be some fluctuations, but the 184 is the blended rate for the 15-year period.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
I guess I do have a question for clarification, because I did understand the frustration from the residents. So on my tax bill, if I'm doing a tax search on a property in Llewellyn Park, there's a special assessment tax already for what currently was borrowed?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Tonight, tonight is the, would be the, is the affirmation of that. And the right, as of right now, the only thing that's out there, if you did a search today, only thing you'd find was probably that the ordinances were initiated and that it was pending.
Okay, so then after September 1st, I'm-
As, after tomorrow.
I'm pulling a tax search on the property, there'll be the, if it's, until it's paid?
Right.
It'll show open?
Yep.
And how long do they have to pay it?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
So if you're refinancing, you could refi, if you have equity, you could refinance-
It doesn't have to move, it, it, it's not, it's not like, it's not like a loan where-
No, but it's there.
It stays there.
It's there till it's paid off.
Yeah, it, it just shows to your, your debt-equity ratio and your, in terms of your cash flow.
But, but of course, you can't borrow, I, I don't think there's anybody here who can borrow at 1.8% because they're not a strong double A credit.
No, 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 I mean, it's a situation, it's a situation that, you know, the bill has to be paid, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it.
Sure, sure.
I mean, our hands are tied in regards to, to paying the bill. I'm just appreciating their frustration.
Yes. Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 160-17?
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokovia?
Yes. Resolution passed.
Next resolution, 165-17 was called, resolution authorizing an award of contract to American Ramp Company through use of the National Joint Power Alliance National Cooperative to provide skate park equipment and concrete pad in the amount of $169,031.33.
Okay, I, I pulled it, I pulled it. I saw Mr. Keough here earlier today.
He had to leave at nine o'clock when he left.
Okay.
Did he give you drawings or something?
Yeah, I gave you a copy.
Yeah, I need to see something.
Yeah, fortunately, unfortunately, I don't know this park.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Is, is this a picture of this park or just this equipment and another park?
I looked through it and this was parked in the west.
Okay. Jenkins Playground?
Yeah, playground.
Yep, okay. Right in that corner.
Have you lost your thing?
Yeah, I bet you did.
How many bad things did you say?
So did your family?
Yeah, I'm sure they did.
Let's keep-
So, so who is the stand-in for Mr. Keough?
I'm not a stand there, I can answer questions if you'd like, or if you'd like to know.
Just why, why the administration has selected this specific location for the skate park?
Well, it was brought to our attention that people wanted to have the skate park there. And what we did was, we had a community meeting on, I think it was the 21st of June. We sent out, recreation department put letters out in neighborhood. When we had the meeting that night, only one family showed up, believe it or not, and the people who showed up were in favor of us doing the park there. And once we had the meeting and no one showed up, and the one family had agreed, the mayor decided to go along with the program.
Excuse me just a second. Again, I just, I understand you guys want to discuss, if, if you do need to discuss, please go outside. We appreciate it. Keep your voice down. Thank you.
You're in trouble.
Have there been any sort of, any sort of estimates as to how many people you expect to use that or how many people are using the playground currently?
I can tell you that we've had a lot of response to getting this done over the last eight to nine years. The question, as you, everyone here knows, we've been looking at different locations and different places. This location was brought to our attention, and at that point, we researched it, did some work, and we feel that this could be a good location for us. And we just wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was notified and involved, and we dropped off those notices. Like I said, we only had one family who came to me, that was it.
Just to follow up on what Ms. Sylvester was saying, we've had, we had a couple of issues on the agenda tonight of legislation that sort of comes to the council, at least from my perspective, that I don't know about, is developing. So I didn't know that this whole thing with the Llewellyn Park-
This is an administrative action.
No, I understand, I understand, it just, I understand. And I know you and I have discussed this previously and we often disagree.
Many times.
I just, I just, it would be very helpful to me, and I don't know about my colleagues, to know about this, this type of material. And I realize that there was a, some public hearing notice in the Chronicle that I missed, and, and I don't know if there was any sort of public, public advertising for the meeting, for the skate park. But it would be helpful to us if there's meetings or initiatives going on that will eventually likely or possibly result in coming to the council, if we could just get notice of that at the same time that you're putting out the notice to, you know, Llewellyn Park property owners or to the folks here about, about the meeting. Because it would just be very helpful to us to know about things going forward.
Okay.
Yes, council?
Okay, to the, to that same, I do agree with my colleague, because I'm just thinking back with the St. Cloud property at Ridgeway, we were informed of all of those public meetings. I am in favor of this though, but I do agree with my colleague that, you know, I saw this on Facebook, someone posted, can this be true finally, that kind of thing. I immediately called the mayor and, and he explained that they're moving forward. So I do understand it's administrative, but I would appreciate knowing what's going on in the neighborhood also.
Thank you.
In my neighborhood, in my old neighborhood.
Anyone else?
I'm going to ditto, we talked today, because I didn't get to my packet till last night, and I saw this, so it was a surprise to me as well. And I'm glad Mr. Keough, I was able to get ahold of him today, he filled in a lot of the blanks for me. Question, I know, Mr. Kizer, is he somewhere, but can we have signage that, you know, I don't know legally what we can say and not say, but I, can we have signage that says that helmets should be worn? I mean, is that something we could post? Helmets and all that?
Oh, yeah, we're going to have, we're going to, trust me, we have this thing all planned out, we're going to have signage, there's going to be the lighting, there's going to be, we're even putting in a camera that's going to be hooked into the fire department. As I said before, there's, most towns that do this, like in Livingston, theirs is right next to their police department, because there's people there 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and that way they can keep their eye on what goes on there. That's the main reason when it was brought to our attention, right behind the firehouse, there's people in, there's employees there 24/7. It really is a perfect location.
And what about parking? Where, like if I'm a parent and-
There's really, that was another issue that we had discussed, because there is parking on Rose Terrace, but there's not a lot of parking when these kids come to this, this, these types of things, at least from the research that we've done. Basically, kids come in with their boards, they skate, and they go home. It's not like, I mean, if it is, it's, it's not like parents bring kids there and sit there and watch them. If it's anything, they drop them off, the kids go in and they play, and then they come back and pick them up.
Well, that's my next question. Mr. Lapore, you're here. Is there a crosswalk at Rose Terrace on Valley Road there? Again, I, I didn't get a chance to drive by there, which-
Rose Terrace ends, if you go down Rose Terrace, it ends at the park.
Okay.
So if you drop your kid off, the kid gets out of your car, walks right into the park. That's how it works.
Okay, but I'm thinking of neighborhood kids.
This park does not connect to Valley Road.
Okay, that's, okay, that's why I was having a-
It doesn't connect to that.
You wouldn't see it.
At all.
It's tucked away in, in the back there.
Right.
You cross the street on a bridge at the end of Rose Terrace to do it.
To get into the park?
Right.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to be, they wouldn't be dropped off on Valley Road, they go right in?
No, if you look, if, if you look at the last page.
I am, I got it open.
Okay. If you look before the, the red square, that's the kiddie park. The beginning of the park is in front of the kiddie park.
Okay.
And that's the end of Rose Terrace.
Okay, so it dead-ends into-
It dead-ends right into the park.
Okay.
And as Lenny said, there's, it's the Wigwam Brook that runs through there, and there's a little bridge that goes over the brook that gets you to the park.
And the fire department is to the right here.
And here's the fire department.
Yeah, I like that.
So Valley Road is way out here. Valley Road has no connection to this park.
Because I know years ago, when I was having conversation, ideally I would, but I understand the other problem it would cause if it was up at like, say, O'Connor Park or Stack, because we just don't have the ability to, to have it monitored with the police.
Well, this is going to be monitored.
Yeah, that, I do, I do like that.
We've put that whole program together already.
Is, is the, is, I'm sorry, councilwoman, please go ahead.
Can you finish?
Is the, is the parking lot for the fire department, is that ever used by people that are accessing the park?
I know that's, yeah, they can't use that.
No, you can't, you can't access the park from there.
Oh, it looks like there's a fence there.
Well, you can, but it's locked. It's never open, so people don't pull in there to get into it. The good thing is, is that if something happens, we can unlock the gate and one of the firemen can go in and, they have to do it, but it's locked. That one gate is locked, it's never open.
And now that all the firemen are certified EMTs?
That's helpful.
It's, I'm telling you, it's, it's a great location for this.
Well, I know it seemed to be the only location, because I know you've been looking at every single park for four years now.
We went through the town, because every time it gets, people in, in certain areas don't want it, and the people give us a call, and they want to meet with us again, and can't we find another place? And this was brought to our attention about three or four months ago, and we looked at it and said it's probably a good spot.
You mentioned Livingston, I don't know if you remember back when we were talking about this in 2010, 2011. Livingston raised all the money privately for that, for that skate park, like $100,000. Was there any-
That's Livingston.
I don't recall that one.
Was there any discussion, I, because I mentioned it when we were discussing it.
We've already voted, we've already approved capital funding for this back in 2011, and we've been trying to build parks since then, and we just haven't been able to get a location.
So that's why we didn't discuss in this year's budget, because it wasn't-
It's already been approved in the capital budget. You guys voted on it, and I don't know if everybody voted for it, but the capital projects were voted in.
Yeah, no, and, and, but I, I personally make a distinction between authorized debt and issued debt. Just because we've authorized it doesn't mean we have to.
I got you, I agree.
We, we don't have to issue this, and we don't have to issue it now.
Absolutely.
I, I mentioned earlier during the, during the public comment that our debt, our issued and authorized debt is, is really up, and so is our, our, our debt service. And I'd like to see us get that more under control, see a year or so where we're not increasing it like we have before we do something like this.
We're still way under the allotment. I mean, Mr. Gross, where are we at now with the percentage? Because the state tells you 3.5 and we're at-
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter, so.
We're getting lower.
We actually were lower than I, when I first came on the council from the refinancing that you did.
Back in 2010, our ratio was 0.89, and now it's 0.135. And just, so you know, what we're talking about is the percentage of debt compared to our total tax base.
No, I hear you.
So that's, just for those following along at home.
And, and part of that change from the 0.89 has to do with the fact that we've had an eroding tax base. So as, that, over the next year, I expect to see that, that our, our debt ratio is actually going to go down.
Yeah, it already started to decline.
Because you are on a decline as far as our assessments are concerned.
Right. So our tax base has been streaking for, I don't know, what, seven or eight years? It would be nice to actually see an increase before we start thinking about what I would consider to be nice to have. And this certainly is nice to have for the, for the, the community, it's just, I don't think the timing is right, so, anyway, councilman?
Yeah, I just want to figure out, I guess, in the future, we can find out what, you know, what bonding is, what bonding obligations are we taking off the books. And no worries, on, on that note, council president, is the accrued time obligations that we have, because we had to borrow some funds on the bonding because, to fund those obligations, which are not in the books. And not only that, council president, but we also have the state of New Jersey now is asking us to list in the books, right, the obligations that we have, pension obligations and, or healthcare obligations, which we make, the state may, may extend that responsibility to local municipalities. So just things to keep in mind as we discuss borrowing and stuff.
We don't pay that out of, we don't pay those, that's out of the operating budget, actual budget or the operating budget. We don't use capital funds for that.
No, but my point is that we've borrowed to pay for accrued obligations.
Yes, we have done that. We have done that.
Yep. Councilman?
I do, Lynn, this is probably more for Lenny. Lynn, we have, I know that there are playground regulations and standards, who would come to inspect this and be sure that it conforms to all those playground standards?
Well, we're buying it from a company that assures that it meets standards.
Okay. Is there landscaping involved and grading and all of that? Is that all included in the?
It includes the concrete pad, and it includes the apparatus that people use on it, it's all included.
Okay.
And just like all of our other parks, I mean, the joint insurance fund, they don't, we do, they help us do inspection, and they'll run out and do the analysis as well. So, and obviously, that, for new facility, it's going to be up far right from the beginning, but as time marches on, they, they, they'll be helping us with that as well.
Inspections? All right, question two, on the property, are there houses that abut against the back of this property? Nothing?
To the left, if you look at that, if you look at the red square, where the trees are, To the left, if you look at that, if you look at the red square, where the trees are, you're holding the photo in front of you, to your left, there's fencing that goes along there, and there are houses set probably 200, 300 feet back that are on Kingsley Street, which is where I used to live.
Yeah.
And then, I used to go through my yard, hauthe that fence in Queens Park. So, there are houses, there's three or four houses that are set back.
We didn't have cameras then?
No, they didn't have cameras. I just had my pocket chaser.
So this whole property park is fenced in then?
Yes. Yep.
So the resolution lists the cost at $169,000, and Mr. Gross said in answer to my question that we might be incurring another $20,000, as much as another $20,000 for cameras, lighting, fencing.
Yeah, the cameras, that top should be like $17,000, and that's because we're not sure we're going to be able to get either a line of sight or, or connection to them. So we're going to use wireless, which are pretty cool cameras, by the way, and a cool factor, but a little expensive. But hopefully, we're going to find a solution that's less than that. So that's, that's the top number.
Okay.
And the firehouse has capability to, obviously be...
Yeah, we've already installed recordings systems in every building, as part of the Chronos program. So, so it makes it easier, easier for us to add additional cameras, and, and less expensive when we, when we want to.
And my last question, how many children can this accommodate? Do you have like...
That I don't, to be honest with you.
Does it stay in this thing?
And how many children on a, give, well, I guess that's the same in any, at any park? So you have a group of kids, I mean, when the fire department feels uncomfortable, they'll call, the police are going to be monitoring this as well?
Absolutely.
I'm not worried about the use, build it and they will come, I just worry about when they come. Were they parking? Are they behaving? You know, we can't expect the fire department to babysit them either. I lied, I have one more question.
Certainly.
Say, so this is permanent, it, it's not removable then?
No.
Like, or not easily removed, in case we want to...
We can shut it down if we want to, but it's not a removable.
So we want it to relocate it in the future?
A lot of those, the problems with a lot of those removable ones too, is from what I understand, when you use the equipment, it tends to slide and stuff. You don't want it to, you want it stable. The life of those movable ones are not anywhere near, you know. The kind of life you're going to get on this.
I know, I know you have.
Over the last 80 years, lots of research. Any other questions?
I want to see signs.
You get them. There's going to be signs there, we're, we're going to do it right, trust me.
Seeing no other comment, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 165-17?
Sumo.
Is there a second?
Huh?
Second.
Trying to take away my own hatred of these, this apparatus, that is my decision. I know, I'm having trouble with it, because...
Perhaps we could just pass and come back to, councilwoman?
I don't think, I don't think...
No, no, I, I'm going to say yes. I know, just from talking to residents over the last eight years, when I didn't want it at the high school, because I didn't think it was appropriate place for it, and had multiple numerous conversations with Mr. Keough. He made me feel a little more comfortable today. And I know there's a need, not everybody, all kids, you know, are interested in sports. And, and I know there's interest with, with kids with this, so I'm going to say, I'm going to say yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukoviac?
No.
Motion is carried.
Resolution is approved.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2516-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones for Handicapped Spaces. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukoviac?
Yes. Under state law, all ordinances on second and final reading are subject to a public comment period. If anybody would like to speak at the public hearing, please raise your hand and be recognized by the president, and come down and speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this ordinance, on second and final reading? Anyone wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I close the public hearing. Madam Clerk? Oh, anybody like to discuss, these are a couple of handicap spaces.
I'm sure they've been vetted out by Lenny.
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt 2516-17?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukoviac?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Ordinances on first reading, 2517-17, and ordinance amending Chapter 5, Sections 30.1 and 30.2, and repealing Chapter 5, Sections 30.3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, licensing of taxi cabs. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukoviac?
Yes. Motion carries. Does anybody wish to, councilwoman?
Well, I wanted to ask Mr., I didn't get a chance to call Mr. Kizer today. On this ordinance, so, just reading into it, so we're lessening licenses for taxis and limousines, I wanted to know why.
We're repealing the entire, as far as I can see, we're repealing all of the regulations we had before. And frankly, well, I'm not going to give my personal opinion, but this taxi cab regulation goes back to Councilman Skarbnik, and I recall it distinctly. We don't have to regulate taxi cabs, we have an option to, if we want to, the state, it's a permissive statute. You know, there's certain state regulations that taxi cabs have to follow, and the clerk has to deal with license, with insurance certificates and so forth. All the other stuff is completely optional. I don't know why we ever did it before. Frankly, we did. And it was a royal pain in the neck for the clerk and...
We have no taxi licenses in town.
I mean, now, in the day of Uber and Lyft and all these other things, they're sort of becoming relevant.
Yeah. Well, that was my next question. So, so let me ask you this, because I didn't get a chance to go read all these that we're repealing. What about the rolling, if you have a cab, I know, because I know an issue in, in my area would be that if you had a taxi cab, and you can't park it in your driveway?
That's different.
That's different. So that's not, not included in all of these? Okay. Because that was my concern, because that, for me, that, that is an issue.
Anything else, councilwoman?
No, no, I'm good then.
Thank you. Ken, I was going to say, I'm going to send a copy of this to my former colleagues, John Skarbnik and Renard Barnes, because Renard and I spent an awful lot of time on that taxi ordinance, because at that time, though we did not have taxi stands in town, there was an issue on Main Street that we were trying to address and resolve. So that's why all of these pieces are here, and of course, the state ordinance supersedes our local ordinance. Anyway, so, it makes sense.
What was the initiation of this? Who decided to do this? Was this you, Mr. Kizer, cleaning up?
Cleaning shop, I guess.
No, this was done by Mark Moon, I believe. I had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
I wasn't familiar with it at all until somebody sent me a copy the last day or two, I think.
Okay.
And that quickly, it appeared to be completely peeled and ordered and stuff.
There isn't, that genesis is not stated in the legislative history, but it is redundant if there is a state ordinance. Anyway.
Anyone else? Council President. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Just to respond back to your request of working with the management firm, Marzulli, with Rent a House, and getting some answers for the residents, I met with the management firm, I got the information, questioned about one, the condition of the carpeting and painting throughout the facility, and that is being addressed. It's not that's been ignored, but they're waiting for the final resolution of how much we're going to have in our capital reserve. Right now, Council President, we have approximately, I'll give you the exact amount, about $1.5 million and a half dollars in capital reserve. Now, of that $1.5 million, close to $900,000 is for the new windows going into the facility right now. So, and that was based, and that money was recouped when we refinanced the mortgage on, on the Rent a House facility. So I brought it to the attention, I walked through, I sent the pictures to Mr. Dan Ritchie, who was our contact at Marzulli, and I gave him the pictures, I said, these are the concerns that are residents, along with the security issue, they, we would like additional security guards, and, and the other thing. And the one thing is, said that, you know, it wasn't in the budget for additional security, but we're going to talk about it at our next meeting, and work it into our budget to give increased, you know, security coverage at the Rent a House facility, to make the residents feel more comfortable, and to, to address their issue. The one issue that I've come up with, Council President and to my colleagues, is that there is not a good way of communication within the facility. And I got that impact from talking to the residents, for their feelings about being scared, about reporting things, and retaliations and all. But I'm working with my board, hopefully at the next meeting, and I've included Mrs. Morelli on my conversations, to, what we're going to do is to increase and improve the lines of communication with, you know, the Rent a House residents, the board, and, you know, the management company. Thanks to Councilman Cirillo here, I got a good understanding of the differences between why people say, well, Degnan House does this, and Rent a House is that. It's just the two different ways that they're set up, and how their management was hired. They have an in-house, you know, management person who works directly for that board, and not a management firm. These are things that maybe my board has to look at, and has to see, are we really getting the bang for our buck? Are our residents and our seniors getting the, the bang for their buck? And the idea is the maintenance of the facility. Now, yes, Rent a House is an older facility, older than Degnan House. How mu, how old is Degnan House, Councilman?
I would say mid-80s, 60s.
Okay. You know, Rent a House is a little older, older than that. So I think I've started off on the right thing, and I've gotten management, now our board, and the residents being included. I meet with the residents at every one of their monthly meetings, to let them know they have somebody to talk to. I've spoken and included Mrs. Morelli, and, and she agrees in how I've been approaching this whole thing. So just to let the residents know, especially our residents at Rent a House, that the issues are being addressed, the maintenance, the carpeting and the painting, the elevators, and the security concerns are being addressed. And the one big thing, Council President, is the lines of communication, to make sure that, you know, Marzulli does communicate with. I mean, at the last meeting we had, the, you know, Mr. Run, you know, Dan said, well, you know, we don't think we should need the mail things, I think he's wrong. I think the residents need to receive something in the mail, something in paper, to let them all, because when gossip starts going around, and that's what the stories I'm getting, people say, well, I heard this from this, I heard it from this person, and it's not the true story, Council President. So I think the one real main thing too, is work on true, correct communications. And I think that'll make the residents even feel even better, more better, and that there are being listened to. And that's my update for now, Council President. Any of my colleagues have questions for me? Yes, Council, oh, Council, I'm sorry.
It's not a question, it's just one, I know that, I appreciate everything you have redone, it sounds definitely moving in the right direction. When I was the council liaison to the Rent a House, there was a newsletter posted on each hall, I can't, like a bulletin board, basically, and you had to get approval to what you post, but I would think that a newsletter from Marzulli and the property managing company explaining any kind of timeline or overview should be posted on that board. They also had a communication box where residents could actually put a letter in. Again, this was a few years back, before there was email and, just was, there was a box there, that you could just write your questions in, you could present, you didn't have to personally present it to the board, but the questions would be read, like a secretary would read the questions to the board, so the answers could be addressed.
No, thank you, thank you, Council, Council, I mean, I think it's a good point, but like I said, I want to make sure that is, and that's why I make sure I go to the meetings. I want them to know that they have somebody here, even though it's not a township building, but I represent them, and, so we just want to move these, these issues forward to them. And I'm, I'm going to like to go talk to the management at Degnan House, and see what they do. Maybe they do certain things that we should be doing, I'm sorry. So, things that we should be doing. So I just want to just keep carrying it out, and seeing what more we can do, what we can afford. I mean, that's why we've got to make sure we're not just going to spend money we don't have. But then again, the residents are paying rent, they're not getting freebies, so the thing about it is, they need to be, you know, addressed, and these issues need to be addressed.
I was just going to add into what Councilwoman said, my grandmother lived there, I mean, the big thing was to go get the mail, and the notices would be on that board, so I think they're really missing their mark if they're not posting, and getting that, those newsletters out to the residents, so, but thank you for following up, I think that's...
No, I mean, I take it as, you know, the thing is, it's my responsibility, you know, you don't just sit there, so.
I do have a question, though. It would be to the managing company about, why has it deteriorated so much from the pictures that we, that were presented to us? I understand, you know, you talk about the $1,900,000 for the windows, but as far as the maintenance of that building, that should not have deteriorated as much as it has.
You're right on point, Councilwoman. The fact of the matter is, that's my good feeling in my question, why are we letting it? They're not losing money, there, there's a fund, there's a reserve, and it needs to be used to maintain the building. It's not fair for those residents to feel that they're living in a second-class facility when they shouldn't feel that way. They're paying rent. It's not, they're not living there for nothing. So that was my next...
And they did make improvements. They have updated the cabinets in the apartments and now the windows, but still, the carpet shouldn't look like that, paint shouldn't be peeling off.
Well, that's what my second meeting, Councilwoman, is with them, is I need to go through the building with them and everything else, and they need to tell me. I've asked for, and I'll forward the email to all of you, that what I've asked for, that I want a reason of why has this been allowed to happen. And that's my question.
Where is the maintenance?
And I want to answer. So, I just want to, and I'll have another follow-up at our next council meeting.
That's great, because it sounds like you identified a lot of the issues, and you started the ball rolling. It'd be good to start seeing, you know, results of this.
Thank you, Council President.
Thanks. Any other matters pending?
Well, they're...
Councilwoman?
I was going to ask, but they're gone, I could, I was just wondering where they were at with the, the firehouses, with, I know they were looking at fixing the roofs, but Mr. Kizer won't have that information for us.
I'm going to go home.
Yes.